I'd like to welcome you to our February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency, ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor by question from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. Tonight, I'd like to ask Pastor David Merced Cruz from Family Life Church if you'll please come and lead us in our invocation. May we all stand together, after which John O'Reilly, he's a Boy Scout and he's a Life Scout with Troop Nine, here with others from the troop, who's also here to honor Dave Ellis, who helped with his scouting career. He will lead us in our pledge.
Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be here, involved in useful work. In the scriptures, you have said that today is the day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. So today, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, the people of Saint Cloud, and for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times and city, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, personal peace in their lives, enjoying their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in or around our beloved city of Saint Cloud. It is in your most beloved name I pray. Amen and amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing as John leads us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may proceed. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Askew.
Here.
Councilmember Trace.
Here.
First of all, are there any updates to our agenda?
No, Mayor, no updates.
I will, without objection, move council action, the Toho Water Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty-two dash oh three four R, right after the Citizens Forum. Do you have any other family members here?
Yes, sir. Most of my family is here.
Please come on up and join us if you would like.
Voice, come on.
I'd also like to invite up Chief Jason Miller and any of the other chiefs that would like to come up and be a part of this recognition. We won't bite you, son. Whereas on February the eighth, two thousand and twenty, a fire broke out at nine hundred Alabama Avenue at the home of Gail Foster and the eleven special needs children and adults she cares for. And whereas through the heroic efforts of Saint Cloud Fire Rescue, everyone in the house escaped safely. And whereas David, Davy Ennis dedicated more than thirty years to serving the citizens of Saint Cloud in various roles from scout leader to firefighter and later retiring as fire marshal. And whereas Davy championed the use of residential sprinkler systems and his collaboration with partners in the fire sprinkler industry resulted in the donation of the sprinkler system that largely played a role in saving the lives of the Fosters. And whereas, this is a perfect example of the impact one man can have in touching the lives of many, and his goodwill will carry on to make a difference for many years to come. And now therefore, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the City of Saint Cloud, do hereby recognize February the eighth, two thousand and twenty-two as David Ennis Day. And we'll invite Chief Miller to step up and share any words that he might like to share.
I started with Saint Cloud Fire Rescue almost twenty-five years ago now, and Dave Ennis was a lieutenant when I started. And I always had fond memories of being able to go to Rife's and get a good steak, and we always used to eat really good when Dave was around. Little did I know the impact that that man would have on the citizens of Saint Cloud. Through Boy Scouts, he was a scout leader, he probably touched hundreds, if not thousands, of kids in the Saint Cloud area. As our fire marshal enforcing codes and protecting lives and even up to the Fosters Fire Department with the sprinkler system, he had a positive impact on everybody he talked to and everybody he met. Everybody loved him. He had a great sense of humor. He's just a great man. And it was an honor for me to know your father, and we appreciate everything he did for us.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to share something? Step up. I'm sorry. I found out about this four days after my dad passed. And I recall coming to breakfast with him a day or two after the fire. And as everybody sees, I know these folks do, he always had a smile on his face. Well, that morning was a little different. Sitting there eating breakfast, I'm like, what's bugging you? And he saved, he sat there and he told me, he goes, I saved six lives. Now, the firefighters did a great job. I worked for Bovard County Fire Rescuers and EMT. If it wasn't for them, then those kids would not be saved as well. But people that were on that call, fire, the fire marshal now, told me if it wasn't for that sprinkler system, they would have never had the chance to even save those kids. My father was big about becoming and having sprinkler systems in houses today because they do have a big impact. If I would build a house today in the city of Saint Cloud, I would probably have a sprinkler system in there due to this fact. It is a proven fact with sprinkler system, it does save lives. So with my dad getting this donated to the Fosters, he was huge in the Fosters, the scouts do a lot with this family. I personally did an Eagle Scout project there. That was where my Eagle Scout, my life project was. So we're hugely connected to him. So I'm very grateful to take this for, from my father, and I'm glad it happened with the Fosters. I'm glad we could do more than just help them out a little bit, but actually save their lives. So I appreciate it, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Could you step forward and let us get a picture?
Mm-hmm.
A couple of you guys pull here on the side over here. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight, and in honor of Dave Ennis, good to have you here. The next part of our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak during the Citizens Forum? If not, we will now move on to the first item that we've moved up on our agenda, Council Action Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty-two dash oh three four R. Would you please read that into the record?
Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty-two dash zero thirty-four R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the city and the Toho Water Authority, TWA, providing for the transfer of all management, operational, and administrative functions, and authority of Saint Cloud's water and sewer utility system to TWA, providing for authority and findings, providing for minimum annual payment to the city of three million three hundred dollars, providing for a transition plan to include transfer of city utilities' employees to TWA, providing that the city shall appoint three members to the TWA board, providing that the city shall retain ownership of the city utility, providing that the mayor and/or city manager may execute any documents consistent with the interlocal agreement and necessary to complete the transfer, and providing any, an effective date.
Ms. Swingle, it's good to have you here.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, citizens of Saint Cloud. Very much appreciate your time and the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Todd Swingle. I'm the executive director for the Toho Water Authority. I'd like to recognize several of our members and our board members and leadership team that are also here tonight. First, Hector Lizas Swain, our board chair, does send his regrets as he is traveling out of state tonight. Domingo Sanchez, our vice chair, is here. Jim Swan, board member, and also former county commissioner and mayor of Kissimmee is here, as well as Henry Thacker. With us, we also have staff representation from Tony Cotter, our general counsel, Jackie Torbert, our senior director for stakeholder services, John Fogarty, our senior director of assets and infrastructure, Rick Nipper, our senior director of operations, Karen Rentsch, our HR director, and Heather Havy, our customer service director. I'll start with a recap of our prior meeting. We had a workshop back last fall, and want to just touch on that just briefly. Toho is a water wastewater and reuse water service provider. That's what we do. We are solely dedicated to those services. We were formed by a special act of the legislature, and our board is currently comprised of three-member governments, which includes five voting members, two from Osceola County, two from Kissimmee, one from Polk, and then we have also one ex officio member from each government. Some key facts about Toho, we have approximately one hundred and fifteen thousand current connections, and just like the city of Saint Cloud are growing as well. Since this presentation was submitted last week, that should now state fourteen water plants and eight water reclamation facilities, as we activated our newest water plant in the Sunbridge Development just this week. We have over three thousand miles of infrastructure and about, just over four hundred authorized positions. Going back to why Toho was formed, the member governments that formed Toho, the reasons for forming Toho hold true today. It was to preserve water resources by promoting regional water supply planning, effective wastewater management, and proactive water wastewater and reuse master planning. It was to also maintain control, to have a seat at the table in that organization. Toho is a member-controlled organization. We have voting and ex officio representation for all of our member governments. And to provide accountability and equity, to equalize rates across our entire service area. When Toho was formed, there was a significant disparity of rates with private utilities and public utilities, and so that is now today, we have a single Toho rate structure. And then also to maintain payment in lieu of taxes to the members, to retain that benefit of a municipally-owned utility. We talked at our last workshop about the value of integration, maintaining that value of owning a municipal utility, increased general fund transfer and representation on the Toho Board. We'll talk tonight as well about that both utilities benefit. This is not just Toho coming in to offer to operate your system. This is truly capitalizing on the synergies of our utilities, given the close proximity of our service areas. It's the added alternative water supply flexibility and improved regional water supply planning. A larger organization with both the financial strength, we are triple-A bond rated, and the economies of scale, reduced rates for most customers, and an ongoing commitment to community and employees. Tonight, we'll talk about the interlocal agreement, which is a utility management structure, capital program timing and benefits, operating assumptions and plan, city of Saint Cloud employees, finances, rate plan, and then a summary and request. Utility management arrangement, this is implemented through an interlocal agreement. There's no modification necessary to either Toho or Saint Cloud's charter. Saint Cloud will still own its assets. This is not a sale of the utility. However, Toho does assume all management responsibility, and importantly, the risk associated. Toho will also assume or defees all of the Saint Cloud utility debt, which is approximately today thirty-two and a half million dollars. As I mentioned, representation on the Toho Board, Saint Cloud would have that representation. Two voting representatives on our board that would be appointments from this, that the council would appoint from the community, and then one non-voting ex officio member on the board, which is a non-voting member but participates in every other fashion as a board member, and that would be one of you as a seated member of the council. All Toho Board members must be, representatives must be a qualified elector of the county and a Toho rate payer. And that Toho rate payer definition is pretty broad, so if you work for a business or live and are a customer of Toho, then that would be qualify you. And then Toho and Saint Cloud will also each designate a staff liaison. We think that's very important as well. The management agreement term, the term is proposed for an initial term of sixty years. It would then renew automatically in thirty-year increments. It can be canceled. It can be canceled at any time if there's an uncured material default by Toho. So if there's anything that we're not living up to that is material, there is a cancellation provision. There's also a cancellation provision for Saint Cloud at each fifteen-year anniversary. We've structured in this manner through working with both your rate and financial consultants and your city staff to ensure that you are seeing the long-term commitment of Toho, but that we also recognize this is a big decision for you as well, and that's why we've compressed those cancellation provisions down to fifteen years for Saint Cloud. The additional cancellation provisions, if this were to happen, and I hate to start the presentation with this because it's something that is, we don't ever envision happening, but it is an important piece that we make sure that we've thought through this, how this would occur if it did. Would involve the payment of depreciated net value added by Toho. That's the increase in the total asset value of the Saint Cloud system, less the added value from developers and grants. We're not asking for any repayment of the things that we didn't increase the value of, less the outstanding debt that would be defeesed by Saint Cloud, so any debt that we've used to finance some of those improvements. And the payment cannot be less than the total outstanding debt. The final piece would also be survival of bulk utility sales agreements. Both utilities acknowledge that they're, have an agreement that this, this agreement creates a significant interdependency, more so than anything we have today. In order, if there were a cancellation, we would need to agree that there's bulk agreements that would survive. That means that could be water coming to Saint Cloud, water coming from Saint Cloud to Toho, water passing between the systems. It's structured in a manner that it's simply the net that either comes into or out of Saint Cloud, and those components of a wholesale agreement are defined. Generally, they include things like transmission, administrative costs, water treatment and production costs. They don't include the things associated with servicing retail customers. Those components of that wholesale rate are then defined in the interlocal agreement. Also requires a transition plan, is similar to what is proposed with entering this agreement. I'm going to talk through the capital program timing and benefits. When you talk about integration of two large systems, there's many different concepts that are important. We will talk about some efficiencies, some economies of scale, and those are important and we expect those to occur. But this is truly a unique discussion. As you're well aware, our, the Toho service area completely surrounds the Saint Cloud service area. We have systems that are very close to each other. We do have some degree of interconnection today, but it's that degree of being able to work together with the infrastructure and truly optimize capital costs that is the most significant value of this proposal. Saint Cloud is currently working on water supply planning, as is Toho. The most significant project on the horizon is the Cypress Lake Water Treatment Plant. That plant is under design. It is, involves partners which are Saint Cloud, Toho, Orange County, Polk County, and Reedy Creek. It's a very significant project that will, could have costs that are approaching five hundred million dollars. Saint Cloud's current estimate of their contribution is about sixty million dollars. Right now, the Saint Cloud projects needs in the two thousand and twenty-eight time horizon, but there are some projections with growth rates that could cause increases for water in the two thousand and twenty-six to twenty-eight time horizon. So there is some challenges of being able to deliver the plant in that timetable. There are other potable supply risks, so we have a regulatory framework in central Florida that is affectionately coined as CFWI, which is the Central Florida Water Initiative. It was recently, it was passed just last year by the legislature. That rule states that all utilities will be cut back to their two thousand and twenty-five demands that are produced out of the upper Florida and aquifer. Saint Cloud's demands does, do exceed, or excuse me, are underneath their allocation, so there is some risk for a cutback. Saint Cloud did a very good job during that rule process, though, in engaging in that rule, and in order to be cut back, the water management district has to demonstrate that there's harm created from your production. So this is not something that is definitely going to happen, but it does represent a risk. Toho is, our demand exceeds our two thousand and twenty-five permit, and so we are already producing water and developing alternative supplies other than Cypress Lake to meet our demands. The value of integration is that the combined demand does exceed the allocation, so the risk of any loss of allocation from a combined utility is lower. On the wastewater side, there's much more modest improvements needed, primarily some rerates of the treatment plant. There are improvements out in the system, but from a treatment standpoint, the treatment needs are limited. Reuse planning is a little more challenging, and there have been challenges with meeting reclaimed demands. Reuse water improvements are needed immediately in order to address those demands, and can include a variety of things, such as stormwater augmentation, augmentation from different sources, or conversion of customers that are currently supplied with potable or dealing with other supply sources. But dealing with those reuse supply challenges is an important need. So overall, the capital drivers are that water's needed somewhere in the two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight time horizon. There are some max day challenges that are needed to address current max day. That is plant improvements, that's not a permitted allocation, but you are close on your maximum day. Significant transmission needs are also necessary to support growth. Reuse water shortfalls are occurring and need to be addressed. The reuse water needs may accelerate potable water use, so if there's irrigation demands that can't be met with irrigation and need to be supplied with potable, that can increase those demands. And again, significant transmission needs are present. There's no immediate treatment need on the wastewater side, but transmission and lift station improvements are necessary. One of the challenges with these improvements is rates. So Saint Cloud's last rate change was in two thousand and fifteen. Since that time period, the CPI of water and wastewater has increased by over thirty percent. So that cost, keeping those rates down is a positive from a customer perspective, and I definitely acknowledge that. The other piece of it is to meet the increasing cost needs and investment needs of the utility as well. Your rate consultant is Raftellus. This data is from a report that was done, I believe, last spring and showed eight percent water and two percent wastewater rate increases over about a four-year period. We'll get into their projections in a little more detail, a little farther on down, and that's since been updated to three percent rate increases, but is coupled with also a more significant reclaimed rate increase and pretty significant borrowing, that's approximately seventy million dollars. Capital planning is one of the biggest challenges that utilities face and is the, is the, one of the biggest challenges that Saint Cloud faces. Over the last five years, the Saint Cloud capital program in utilities has been about thirty-nine million dollars. Over the next five years, your current five-year plan has costs of about a hundred and forty-five million dollars. The draft master plan that has been created to support identification of utility projects shows projects totaling about two hundred and eleven million dollars. It's likely that some of those that are in the master plan don't have to come in that five-year window. From the review we've conducted, and we do use the same consultant for our master planning work that you use, we estimate that number's probably in the hundred and eighty, ten, hundred and eighty-five million dollar range. So ultimately, that big of an increase in capital planning does create rate and cash flow pressures. All of the models that we have run through our financial consultant, who is here tonight as well, and that have also been run by your own rate consultant, identify that there are needs, there will be cash flow challenges that have to be addressed in the coming future. Every utility has the same tools. Reduce costs, which is a challenge right now, given the need for the projects that you have on the books that are valid, and the current inflationary cost increases that we're seeing in projects. Increasing rates or fees, those can include both rates and fees, such as your system development charges, which is what Toho calls them, or impact fees that many refer to. And then also leveraging strategic borrowing for capital programs. The reality is, all three of those things are tools that need to be used, so it's not pick one or the other. For most utilities, it involves all three. As we talk about capital opportunities, there's several priorities in looking at an integrated utility that we have considered. Meeting the needs of utilities on time, eliminating and reducing projects, delaying projects and expenditures, improving reliability and resiliency, minimizing capital costs, and maximizing synergies. This is a chart that shows projects and treatment plants that are, that cross both Saint Cloud's service territory as well as Toho's service territory. In the green in the middle are Saint Cloud plants. Surrounding that, in the blue, are Toho plants, and then the Cypress Lake project is what I've already mentioned. I'll walk you through what we see as some of the most significant opportunities of an integrated utility. Currently, you have, as part of that capital plan, you have a number of improvements, including improvements that are necessary at water treatment plant two, to meet your maximum day demands. However, you don't, you don't have an opportunity to increase the permit, so that's just addressing, basically pumping. Through integrating with Toho and expanding our interconnect options, we believe that we can completely eliminate that expansion. That's about, currently in your budget at about a nine million dollar project. The estimates that we've received from our consultants is that it's more likely at about a fifteen to twenty million dollar project. Because of our plants at Parkway and BVL, we're able to push water into that area. Also, if you see demands that are, come into place before Cypress Lake comes online, you do have a likely opportunity to get temporary permits and temporary allocation from the water management district. But that still requires investment in infrastructure to increase treatment and production capacity. That's not going to be needed in the long term because ultimately that, those, those temporary allocations would be removed. As I mentioned, Toho has several additional alternative water supply projects that we're doing. Most notable is our hundred and sixty acre in Shingle Creek project. It will occur at one of those two locations. It's about a It's about a six MGD project, and it is currently in design. With that project, we are able to meet many of our needs in the western portion of our service territory. By doing that, that allows us to reduce groundwater pumping that we are, would be able to move into the St. Cloud area. So that is a noteworthy difference because now an investment in plants begin, with that integration begins to make sense, because it's not just a dollar investment, it's a dollar investment to support increases in permitted allocation. So in our, while, while I will talk a lot about cost savings, there's significant investment as well, and in those budgets that we've put together, that includes about a $20 million investment in both processing capacity improvements at Water Treatment Plant Four. That benefits Toho as well. We have significant plant upgrades that are necessary in the next 10 years at Harmony, and by doing Water Treatment Plant Four upgrades, that helps defer or delay those or even eliminate them. It does require significant piping enhancements that would be between Water Treatment Plant Four and Harmony. That's around the south end of Alligator Lake, but that is a potential growth area for St. Cloud. By both offsetting these significant costs, but providing that infrastructure, it is planning for the future and having utilities available when they're needed. Additionally, we have just, as I mentioned, started up the Sunbridge Water Treatment Plant this week. We would also increase capacity, and that plant is actually already in design to increase capacity. That provides, that interconnection provides another significant benefit. Anytime that you have one or even two plants, a single issue can cause a major problem. So Toho does have individual plants at Sunbridge, we have individual plants at Harmony. We're already in the process of interconnecting Sunbridge with the remainder of our system. St. Cloud only has two plants, but through these processes, we'll be completely interconnecting our systems, which gives significant more, significantly more resiliency and reliability to all of our systems. The final major improvement is that through these, these processes, we believe that we can even further delay some of the investment in Cypress Lake. Not forever, by a few years, but those, that delaying investments of that magnitude is significant. The other piece is that Cypress Lake is a treatment plant, but is also significant piping improvements. Some of the piping improvements that come up from the north and into the southern portion of St. Cloud, we think can even be delayed further and improve the timing of those concurrent with your significant developments that are, that are associated with Edgewater and Green Island. By doing that, it gives a greater opportunity for cost share with those developers. I've already covered a, a lot of these benefits, but it, the, the overarching story is that there, but through this extensive interconnection of our systems, we're able to meet maximum day demands, we're able to shift permitting and pumping to improve the financial performance and plant performance of your system, but that also supports improvements with Toho's system and overall just increases the, the general reliability and resiliency of our systems together at a much lower cost. On the wastewater and reuse side, I talked about that there's not as many significant improvements, and that does, that is correct on the wastewater side. On the reuse side, again, we do have permitted additional supplemental sources. So we are in design on the production facility for the Toho Reservoir, which many of you are familiar with, is the large reservoir located near Neo City. And so that treatment facility is in design, and I think we're coming up on 60% design and our board just approved some additional land acquisition to support that project last night. That project is also structured in a way that we can expand it all the way to potable if needed. By having that water just on your western boundary, we're able to push reclaimed water into St. Cloud. You have excellent storage that does benefit Toho. One of the other pieces is you've got, you, St. Cloud has challenges in the northeastern quadrant with piping limitations and getting reused to areas and subdivisions that have reuse systems but don't have that supply. I talked about the new plant that we just commissioned this week at Sunbridge, that's a water plant. We're under construction on the wastewater plant as well. That wastewater plant is designed, it'll initially operate as a one MGD facility, but it's designed to be near-term expanded to three and a half and ultimately to seven MGD. By, by interconnecting our systems there, we'll be able to re, reverse wastewater flows that minimizes the capital costs that you have in your transmission system to bring wastewater south. It keeps reclaim up in that area and allows us to better interconnect along that Narcusi corridor to provide reclaim services up in that area. Again, significant benefits to both of us. We are able with those supplemental use permits to improve water availability in the St. Cloud area, but that interconnection that I talked about also provides improved wet weather storage for us through your, some of your storage ponds and your deep well that are management. That additional interconnect even goes as far as helping us during very wet periods to move water as far west as possible, where that 160-acre site that I mentioned, we actually recharge the Florida aquifer, which has the potential to offer us increased groundwater. I mentioned that groundwater is not available beyond 2025, and there's one exception, and that's when there is a, what is called an impact offset project. So if through actions like recharge, you generate an improvement in the aquifer, you can then permit withdrawals back to that same baseline condition that was permitted through CFWI. All of this boils down to a more effective, both performing and cost-effective system. Long-term, we, we are confident that there's at least $35 million in savings. We think it's more than that. We've only worked with projects that are in our current five-year capital plans. Again, this was, this is structured as a long-term arrangement. So as we continue to move forward and plan for the future, those same benefits of a fully interconnected system, we, we expect to happen on new projects as well. Perhaps more importantly than that long-term savings is that in, in the next five years, with some of the projects that can be deferred or delayed, we expect to see 41 to over $70 million in cost savings in that next five-year period. So, resummarizing, the St. Cloud Capital Program benefits are that we're able to eliminate Water Treatment Plant Two, and just for those of you both in the audience as well, that Water Treatment Plant Two is the water treatment plant that's located here on 10th Street, right next to your fire station, just west of City Hall. It avoids that investment in an outdated and poorly-located plant. That's not an ideal location for the plant, given where your growth areas are. And it frees up that land for fire department needs, which is, had, adds value as well. It delays the need for Cypress Lake. Our other alternative water supplies support growth in the area, and it improves the, the potential for developer cost share in those future pipelines. It helps address the, the St. Cloud reuse water shortfalls, and importantly, it reduces the risk associated with ramp-up and delivery of St. Cloud's significantly expanded capital program. I've talked with your staff a lot, I've talked with the city manager a lot, and you have people that are very committed and that are working very hard to deliver those capital programs and to operate your system every day. Any system going through a ramp-up from $39 million to approaching $200 million is a challenge. It's a challenge in terms of delivery and the pace and resourcing to meet those, those demands. And so that, it does, given our capacity as an organization, it helps mitigate some of those risks. The combined capital cost benefits, and again, this truly is a combined benefit, is somewhere between 40 and 72, 41 to 72 million of reduced and delayed spending in the next five years and over $35 million in savings over the next 15. Those savings support transition directly to Toho's rates, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that means as well. It improves the water and reuse system performance and reliability, reducing the dependency on any single water source. So again, back to that integrated system, anytime that you can fully integrate a system, it offers you two benefits. One is it is more reliable. The second is, it reduces risk associated with demand projections. If you happen to expand a plant, and it's a standalone plant, and you didn't expand it enough, now you're scrambling to go and, and do those additional increases. If you expanded it too much, you've got stranded capital, that's money sitting there, that's invested in that plant, and it's not, not operating in its fully efficient manner, and that's not the ideal way to deploy capital. The better your systems are integrated, the less those risks, those risks are dampened as well. Importantly, neither utility can achieve these combined cost savings or benefits on their own. This is a partnership, this is an integration. Toho cannot achieve those cost savings on our own. St. Cloud cannot achieve those cost savings on your own. Each of us, if we approach our independent capital programs, will result in significant more capital spending from the citizens of Osceola County and the city of St. Cloud. Move on to operating matters. Planning coordination is an important item. Toho would participate in St. Cloud's DRC, which is your Development Review Committee process. We have a Developer Services Agreement, which is the agreement that we sign as we move into development and are moving forward with infrastructure improvements. As part of that, the interlocal agreement calls for us to continue your encumbrance process. So inside the joint planning agreement with the county, when you have a property developing in the joint planning area, it's required to get an encumbrance. That encumbrance says that it will annex at some point in the future when it, when it's contiguous and meets all those requirements. Toho would still continue to collect those encumbrance documents. It also includes a requirement for compliance and confirming city concurrence with a particular article of the joint planning agreement, which is Article 6G. That article requires that if a project is developing inside the joint planning area, and it's contiguous to the city that it needs to develop in the city. So the way the interlocal agreement has been structured is that we will still be managing this process, but we would get concurrence from the city that those two conditions are met. Additionally, we'd be providing a portal for the St. Cloud planning staff to access utility GIS data. So that data is very important to the planning staff, but also to staff like code enforcement and things of that nature. Customer service and community. Toho intends to maintain a customer service presence in St. Hall, in, in St. Cloud City Hall. Initially, that would look very much like what you have today. Over time, that, that would be reduced. We try to avoid cash handling by individuals. It's, both represents a risk from both cash handling, but also from a safety standpoint as well. We are as well moving toward a kiosk system. The goal would be to include a, a drive-up and a walk-up kiosk. These are basically reverse ATMs, where you can pull up your account, you can pay with a, with cash, check, credit card, and have that, that service. But our intent is still to keep two customer service reps in City Hall. So we wholeheartedly support that face-to-face experience and being able to talk to someone about an issue that you have, or being able to assist with use of a kiosk or a computer-type system. The billing and CIS transition, the transition to the Toho billing system would be proposed to occur by October 2023, so it's about 18 months from now. So in the meantime, those systems would be operated in parallel. The interlocal agreement allows for full transition to the Toho rates as soon as possible. It explicitly allows you as the council to adopt those rates as well, even in advance of the final transition date. We wanted to make sure that the, the cus, that your citizens, your customers, had that opportunity to see those lower rates as soon as possible. Billing and other charges, such as solid waste, would be, it calls for those to be transitioned off by October, of the, the Toho bill by October of 2023, but does provide provisions that if, that we could enter into an agreement for extension of that, so that, of the, that billing approach. But, so that gives an 18-month time window in order to have those discussions in more detail. On the community engagement front, Toho allocates $1 per customer for community events and donations. Every year, our board, again, of which you have two seats, would have two seats on that board, go through an allocation. Typically, the, the board allocates about 90% of the funds and then allows me to deal with other things that may come up through the remainder of the year. Over the last few years, with some of the needs that have been identified in the, in the community, our board has also taken additional funds such as from surplus vehicles and allocated them into this fund. In fact, just last night, our board asked me to take another $45,000 from vehicle sales and increase the fund by that amount. And so we'll, at our next meeting in March, we will be going through and allocating those funds to our nonprofit community partners. And so that is something that, and that, that represents about a 35% increase that they just did last night. Facilities, utility-owned facilities would be utilized by Toho. We would maintain a continued presence of up to five years in two locations, City Hall for engineering and support staff, and then the Joint Use Facility, which is where the warehouse and your field services groups are housed. Longer term, so with that five-year target, Toho would construct an operations center that we believe generally right on the eastern side of St. Cloud. That's a good location for us as an integrated utility to both serve St. Cloud, but serve our growing areas of Sunbridge and Harmony as well. There are services, and this is similar to our arrangements with the city of Kissimmee. There's, there is, there are services that continue to be provided even that, for the foreseeable future. Two of those that are noted here are fleet and fueling. St. Cloud employees, this is obviously a very, very important matter, and I do want to commend your city manager because even prior to the, the last workshop and throughout this entire process, I can tell you that the number one thing that was always a topic of discussion was taking care of the employees. I happen to know a lot of your employees and worked with a few, with many of them, and also believe very much in the same philosophy. So I do want to, as we walk through this, also note that if this agreement is approved, the St. Cloud employees become Toho's employees. We are very diligent about working with and supporting our employees, and even to the point that we recognize right now, there's a lot of challenges going on with recruiting and retention, but also making sure that our employees are rewarded and recognized for the work they do. So our board was very supportive last fall and into this spring, went through a pretty significant additional compensation adjustment to benefit our employees, where we raised our minimum wage from $15 to $17 an hour. And so that's very beneficial and something that we want to make sure that if St. Cloud's employees are joining Toho, they are Toho employees at that time, and that we'll take care of them just like we take care of our own. All St. Cloud employees will be offered Toho employment. There's no intent to eliminate filled positions, so as we've walked through the finances, we've made no assumptions about cutting positions. There, the only positions that have even been considered would be vacant positions, but there has been no financial assumption of eliminating any filled positions. All, any employee would become a full-fledged Toho employee day one, and they would also, their tenure would also transfer over. So a 20-year St. Cloud employee, as the date of this transition, is a 20-year Toho employee. There's no loss of tenure by coming over. Employee leave balances and current accrual rates will transfer, and then the goal is also to assign employees in the St. Cloud vicinity if desired. We know that, that working, many of them live in St. Cloud, and that's important, but others, we know of at least one or two of your employees that live even west of our service territory, so there may be others that do desire to work a little farther out in our service territory. And likewise, we'll have employees that I'm sure, that will want to come over this way because we've got quite a few employees that live in St. Cloud as well. An important piece for, and probably one of the most important pieces for all of your employees is your pension program. And so we've worked closely with your pension council and a pension council that we retained, and so we would be, create a closed group within St. Cloud's pension. Toho's responsible for all the costs. This allows the, your employees to earn and continue to grow the pension as if they were still St. Cloud employees. So there's no changes to their pension program. The one exception is that we will work to also provide them the option to transfer to ours if they would like. Your pension program is very good, and if somebody's either been here a long time or plans to be here a long time, I would highly recommend they stay in your pension. But there are, there are values of ours as well. Ours is a defined contribution plan, kind of like a private sector 401K, and the value of that is we don't have a vesting period. So there are some benefits, but ultimately, it's the employee choice. And we are working to confirm that that transfer is doable, but at a minimum, we do know the retention of the pension is valid. And then transition to other Toho benefits, which are generally comparable. Pay is the other significant item, so all Toho, all employees would be mapped to the Toho equivalent grades, placements based upon duties, experience, licensure and skills. All employees will be, receive at least the minimum of their new grade, which in some instances is a substantial increase, particularly in the, the lower grades, or a, a, at least a $2,000 raise. We have actually budgeted $500,000, which equates to a average We have actually budgeted $500,000, which equates to a average of between $4,000 and $5,000 across employees, but that would not be linearly applied, because it needs to be looked at based upon individual positions and tenure, and all of those other types of factors. I've included a graph to the right, and this is very similar to the graph that we saw when we did our recent compensation adjustments, that many of the, from a percentage standpoint, many of the increases are really compressed down in those lower wage levels, which we think is very prudent, given the, the cost of, the cost of living increases that are going on. And so, we think that's actually a really good structure. There are other pay that, that we have that are, that are not noted in that baseline pay, and that I think are worth discussing. As part of our healthcare program, all employees receive either $1,000 as an individual or $2,000 as a family to, for their health spending account. And so, this helps them pay any of their copays and things of that, or deductibles and things of that nature. Our longevity pay is $600, starting the first year, and then grows by $30 a year. We believe that longevity pay starts with year one, because as I've jokingly talked with some of our, our folks, how many 10-year employees quit at year two? Not many. So, we, we do believe, and we have, that has been a change that our board approved about two years ago, or about a year and a half ago. We have several other health-based funds. We have a health assessment. There's some activities you have to do, logging on to the website, getting your annual physical and doing those things. That contributes up to eight, a little over $800 to their benefits. A tobacco cessation program that can, that provides a little over $600. And then, we have other health activities that people, such as gym memberships and things like that, that are in $50 increments, up to about $250. So, the next piece that I would like to move on to from employees is to the City of St. Cloud finances. So, as I mentioned, we have had a financial consultant, though it's the financial consultant that we use for our rate evaluations, conduct a, an evaluation of your baseline condition and the, the condition, the financial condition of an integrated utility. On the baseline condition, your rate consultant, Raftellus, has also provided that same type of review as well. In our review, we have included your proposed weight rate, what, your reclaimed wa, excuse me, reclaimed water rate increase. That was the one that was presented to you last fall. I think you did delay decision on that till after this discussion. With that, based upon the current capital program needs of $145 million, we project 4.5% increases over about the next three-year time period. Your rate consultant projects a little lower. They, they are showing the rate increases at about 3%. Really, the difference is in the strategy of borrowing. Our borrowing results in $33.8 million in estimated borrowing in that time window. With those lower rate increases, your, your consultant shows about $70 million in borrowing. So, it's a trade-off of slightly higher rate increases for lower borrowing. And there's no right answer. Ultimately, the answer is what the governing body chooses, as long as you're meeting basic requirements. And the, the requirements that drive those types of decisions is largely debt service coverage, so making sure you've got enough coverage. It's, it's kind of like your own, applying for a mortgage, making sure that your, your ratios are good. So, it's basically the same thing for a utility, and it's also maintaining a minute, the desired level of cash on hand. I think for, for your policies, you're striving for a 90-days' cash on hand. I will say, that's one of the things that, that Toho does work toward, is that, that rainy day fund, and making sure that we are positioned with cash on hand to support uncertainties like unplanned projects, cost increases. And so, we, we do strive to keep about a year cash on, as an organization. All of your projections are very highly dependent on growth, and what I've called SDC revenue, which is system development charges. It's your impact fees. CIP program needs, costs and cost escalation, which we are seeing that across really everything, from commodities, but certainly in the construction realm as well. As we've modeled an integrated utility, we've used that, that capital cost program of $115 million, which reflect, reflects the cost savings that we've shown. We, one, an important piece is that we have modeled a general fund transfer of 12% of annual revenue. That is an increase compared to your, what St. Cloud currently transfers to the general fund, which is 9.5%. So, for FY '22, that is $3.3 million. The only locations that we've projected, projected operating savings are within customer service, and that's from some vacant positions, and also some overlap, being able to reduce costs with the CIS system, which is a relatively expensive software system to run, and, and those types of, those costs. The other is in allocated admin charges, which are those, kind of, those support functions as well. Labor impacts. We have projected additional, we're using all of your current labor rates, labor costs. We've added the $500,000 I mentioned for employee, employee raises. We've also included $610,000 over that next five-year forecast period for new employees to support growth needs in the area. We are using also Toho's projected rate increases, which are 4% for FY '23 and '24, and then 3% beyond that. That results in a reduced borrowing need of about $25 million as compared to, I think, the $33 million or so that I showed you on the baseline scenario. That generates positive cash flows, and importantly, those cost savings allow immediate transition to Toho rates with no surcharges. You may recall that when I presented to you last fall, on the, in that workshop, I talked about the possibility of surcharges, where you would be on Toho's rates, and there may be a 5% or 7% or 10% surcharge, and that we'd work to equalize that over a 5- to 10-period. This, to 5- to 10-year period, this proposal moves you on to Toho rates immediately. And it is driven by those capital cost reductions that we've identified through this process that allows us to put that on the table. So, in summary, the financial model conclusions. Overall, capital spending decreases. The anticipated rate increases are comparable or reduced. Anticipated borrowing requirements are comparable or reduced, and decreased capital rates support transition to Toho's rates. There's a higher ongoing general fund transfer rate, 12% versus 9.5. Last year, or this past year, you transferred approximately $2.3 million into your general fund out of the utility fund. This increases to $3.3 million this year, based on FY '22 revenues. Not only are we providing that 12%, we're guaranteeing that 3.3 million as a floor. So, both the city's and Toho's general fund transfer resolutions, or in case of Toho, pilot, provides for that those transfers can't drive rates, and they also can't put the utility in the red. Similar to when Toho was formed out of the City of Kissimmee utility system, the City of Kissimmee council wanted to know that they were at least going to be where they were at today. And so, this same type of guarantee was provided when, when Toho was formed out of Kissimmee. We're providing that today to say that your current transfer rate, which would be for this year, of the 3.3 million, would be a guaranteed floor. It's also not just the 3.3. It is indexed each year by a, an index that's stated in the inter-local agreement. So, over that five-year modeling period, the average transfer rate is $4 million. Rate plan. For a water and sewer bill, Toho has a conservation rate, as does St. Cloud. Ours, in our upper tiers, is more, but our lower, we use that to make sure that our lower tiers are as cost-effective as possible. The average customer in both of our systems is going to use somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,000 to 5,000 gallons. Customers inside the city using 6,000 gallons or less of water and sewer only would see a rate reduction. That's about 80% of your bills. Outside the city limits, it's a little higher, and that's because of the 25% surcharge that you have. So, that's 97% of bills, and that's customers using less than 13,000 gallons. But we know there's a lot more than just water and sewer bills. There's irrigation, there's reclaim, there's cross-connection fees. So, Toho did a very robust analysis. We took every one of your customers' bills for an entire year, and we analyzed those both on your current rates and on our rates. So, that includes their total bill experience, not just water and sewer, but water, sewer, any irrigation, any reclaim, cost differences amongst cross-connection, control fees, those types of things. When looking at that, 76% of the bills decrease. The predominant, the bills that, that increase are predominantly higher users, mostly in the, the, with high-use reclaim. That's shown very readily by this second graph that shows if you adopt the increased reclaim charges that you proposed last fall, then that number compared to our current rates, 84% of your customers see a rate reduction. The chart in the upper right-hand reflects that your rate consultant, as well as our rate consultant that's conducted these models, has indicated you have additional rate increases that are needed beyond the reclaim rates. And so, we don't know what that is and can't model it. But any additional rate increases that you would adopt here in the near term, that would mean more customers still would realize that savings comparatively onto our rates. So, in summary, the value of Toho, let me get to here, I have some notes. We're a full-service provider of all utilities, water, wastewater, reuse water. Again, it's what we do. The proximity of our infrastructure provides a unique opportunity for partnership and operation as a fully-integrated organization. This is a unique opportunity. I would not be standing before here today telling you about all of the things we could do if we were just here offering you a, offering to come in and manage your system and not take advantage of a full integration. That's where the value comes of us truly operating as an integrated utility. We have a long history of partnership. We have scale benefits. We're also very integrated with the community. And I'm, I want to walk through one of the things that I, that I think is the most important change in our organization over the last year, and it's been supported by our board, is that many organizations have a vision, mission, values. And that's important. It's important to know who you are and what you're about. We've gone away from that more traditional corporate-type statement, and we've adopted now promised priorities and principles. And the promise that we've adopted for our organization is that our customers, our community, our employees trust that Toho cares. It's a much easier conversation with our employees about what the expectation is. Because regardless of what our policies are, when someone gets off the phone with a customer, when they react, respond to a break, when they respond to an issue, it's not, did you follow our policy? It's also, did that customer trust that we cared when we left? And that's a, a conversation that we are now having every day with our employees. We've also established priorities to make sure that we've got a laser focus on what we want to accomplish, and we've identified those as providing safe and reliable services, protecting the environment, delivering value, and investing in the future. And then, our employees adopted five words for our principles. We went through a survey process with our employees. They came up with lots of words. And then, we went back to the, them to survey, and I'm very proud of what they came up with, which is integrity, responsiveness, dependability, professionalism, and quality. So, this is how Toho will work. The final thing I want to talk about for the value of Toho is that the integration benefits both utilities. Again, this is a mutually beneficial proposal. We both benefit from the integration that would achieve, be achieved through this execution of this inter-local agreement. The value for St. Cloud, representation on the Toho board. We're not asking you just to turn over management and let us do whatever we might do. We're giving, we're proposing full representation of two voting members and one ex officio member. That is identical to the representation that the City of Kissimmee and Osceola County have. We've got an ongoing commitment to the community employees, to maintain a local presence. All employees maintain their pension and receive pay increases. Improved infrastructure performance, reliability, and resilience. We talked about that, that through better interconnection, better integration of our systems, that improves system operation and resilience. Importantly as well, is that Toho's scale helps provide improved ability to respond to issues and to provide specialized technical functions. Two years ago, we created a dedicated water quality position, so that person does nothing but go out and look for opportunities for us to continue to improve water quality. We have now purchased a, a localized THM monitor, so that we can, in our lab, that we can do enhanced screening, so that we're not waiting on a lab result. We can screen those with our own system, so that we can make operational changes as we see issues. I talked a lot about the improvements of infrastructure and infrastructure organization, but people is really our most important thing. All employee, all utility employees are cut from the same cloth. They're committed, they're knowledgeable, they're passionate. That applies to Toho's employees, that applies to St. Cloud's employees. But St. Cloud's, St. Cloud's scale does limit its breadth and depth and, and capacity. Toho does have the capacity to add more depth and breadth of utility experience. I, I talked to you briefly and introduced my leadership team at the beginning of this, and I want to go back a little bit, just to talk about them and the value that they bring. So, I mentioned John Fogerty. He has recently joined us last summer as our Senior Director for Assets and Infrastructure. His background is that he was Vice President of American Water Operations. That is the firm that operated the Tampa Desalinization Plant. He was also the former COO of Pennsylvania Power and Light and CEO of their, of the Pennsylvania and Power Light Chilean subsidiary. He brings to bear extensive experience in linear asset programs. So, our capital program's about $600 million, and John's tasked with delivering that program, but I'm very confident in the capability that he brings. Jackie Torbert is Stakeholder Services. She has over 30 years' experience in large utility water management and compliance oversight. She's also a past Vice President nationally of the American Water Works Association. Her, her mission is connecting operations to the customer experience. So, when we crafted Stakeholder Services, it was that recognition that we have very vital support functions. Customer service, IT, environmental compliance, our organizational development function. Jackie brings 30 years of utilizing those functions as an operational leader, with now the mission to connect those closely with operations. Rick Nipper came from the ground up. He's a wastewater operator with over 40 years' experience, former Deputy Director of Palm Bay. And then, just this week, we added Heather Haby as our new Customer Service Director. Heather started her career at GE as a Six Sigma Black Belt, but spent the last 20 years at Disney, delivering on a world-class customer experience expectation. So, our goal is not to be measured against other utilities on our customer service. Our goal is to be measured against the best, and that's something that I'm very confident that Heather will help us deliver. Finally, the value for St. Cloud. We talked a lot about this, and this, this is a, a very important piece. We increased the general fund transfer. We, we refer to that as pilot or payment in lieu of taxes. Increases from 9.5% to 12%. Increases to 3.3 million. This year, last year, it was 2.3 million. Guaranteed floor of 3.3 million that would be indexed annually. Reduced costs and rates. Reduced capital costs by over $35 million. I haven't projected anything in terms of long-term economies of scale, but they're present. We didn't want to assume those until we could really get in, but we firmly believe those are present, and those will help continue to sustain and control costs over time. And finally, that transition onto Toho's rates. When we run that rate model, that translates into $20 million of savings for the St. Cloud customers over the next five-year window. And with that, I would like to open up the floor for any questions that you may have and any discussion that you'd like to have.
First of all, do you have anyone from your board that's here to speak?
I do have several board members. Supervisor Swan, would you like to speak?
I could. Thank you, sir. Mayor, how are you, sir?
Good.
Council members, except for Keith, I don't think I, I know any of the others, but I knew, I knew him the day he got engaged.
[laughing]
Thanks for a minute or two. I'm not very long-winded. People that ever watch, watch me run a meeting, you know what that means. My name is James Swan, S-W-A-N. And as men, as many of you know, I had the honor of serving as Mayor of Kissimmee for 10 years and an Osceola County Commissioner for 12. As a former fishing guide and resident of Osceola County for 50 years, I am passionate about my community and the environment, and especially our water resources. Nothing is more important than water. In my opinion, joining, excuse me, joining Toho was one of the best decisions the city commission ever made in the city that I live in. They didn't ask my permission or anything, they just went and did it, but I'm proud that they did. Joining with Toho or creating They didn't ask my permission or anything. They just went and did it. But I'm proud that they did. Joining with Toho or creating Toho saved our citizens money. It provided a continued growth source for funds for the city. It added value because of Toho's sole mission is to manage water resources, period. Protect the environment. I think the more important thing that's on this dais, there is really, I very passionately feel about it. I know making big decisions are never fun. I've been involved in two or three of them. But this will turn out to be, I think, one of the major accomplishments that this City Council will make. Will make, excuse me. And I'm sorry about my voice. I had a little surgery stuff going on yesterday, so...
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Thanks for coming. Do you have anyone else's? Mr. Todd?
Thank you.
Do you have anyone else to speak? Then, we're going to ask anyone in our audience that would like to offer public comment. We'll give them the opportunity to do so at this time, and if you'll please stand by.
No, we have no one else.
Okay. Thank you. Teresa Melhot?
Good evening, Council. First time I've seen you up here. You look good. It's been a while since I've been here in person. In fact, I believe the last time was at a meeting after the workshop in July concerning selling the water to Toho. And as I said then, I don't believe this is in the best interest of the citizens of St. Cloud. I also... I spoke then... Listen, I'm not a politician. I don't have smooth talking or double speak. So, let me just do what I do best, and it's be blunt, but nice. You're all playing semantics with the citizens of St. Cloud. You're using the word managing instead of selling. Selling, you would have to take a citizen's vote, put it on the ballot, and the citizens would have the right to vote on this, selling our asset out from under us. Managing it for 60 years, that might as well... that's a life term for most everybody in this room. I don't think the same people would be here in 60 years. Probably not many of you, maybe Kobe and his great-grandson or somebody. I just feel like if this was really a good thing for the citizens, you all would have had, just like you did the lakefront, you had meetings, public comments, public input. You could have been selling it to the citizens. Instead, you're trying to bypass us and not allow us to vote on it. So, my thing is, if you really believe this is a good thing, then let the citizens vote on it. Put it on the ballot in November. It is our right to speak on this. Don't use double talk saying managing instead of selling, because for the citizens, it's going to be all the same thing. It was set at that workshop. Toho only had to come and convince three of you all versus selling. And all they'd have to... they'd have to convince 30,000-plus St. Cloud citizen voters. So, I would like to see, if you really want to do this, it to go on a referendum on the ballot in November. You all can spend that time. He can come and have many different public places at the Civic Center and the Marina Room or anywhere and sell it to us. Explain it to us all, not just you guys. I mean, it's the citizens' right. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Melhot. Would someone else like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have our consultant from Raftalus, Henry, here, and let's see if he can make a few comments about his analysis.
That would be well received.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Henry Thomas, and I'm the Vice President with Raftalus and the city's current utility rate consultant. So, we were offered an opportunity to review the feasibility report prepared by Toho's rate consultant, and we spent a bit of time going through their analysis, both the baseline and the integrated analysis. And I do have a number of conclusions that I would share with you. So, with respect to the nature of the feasibility study, which to me is sort of a proof of concept, does this integration work and how does it work financially? I think that the projections and assumptions used in their study were appropriate for that level of analysis. I would point out that, and has been mentioned by Mr. Swingle, that the operating savings are minimal in this in terms of day-to-day operations associated with operating St. Cloud utilities. And in fact, they cited one area, which was customer service resulting in reduced costs. I do believe, as Mr. Swingle said, in the long run, there certainly will be other economies and opportunities for savings, but we haven't had a chance to identify those as of yet. So, the basis of the positive outcome for the result with the rate reductions, the savings, and the benefits to both St. Cloud and Toho are based upon, generally speaking, as Mr. Swingle indicated, on the capital integration of the capital planning. Obviously, water supply is a complex area. We've got regional water supply groups throughout the state of Florida that are forming, and a lot of it is to deal with this very expensive alternative water supply projects. A big part of the savings is the deferral of those investments, given Toho's current situation with regard to their water supply and what they can do with St. Cloud as an integrated system to defer capital investment and achieve those savings. I do wish to point out that when we issued a draft report a while back, we had rate increases that were predicated on a schedule for Cypress Lake that got deferred. The project itself got deferred. And as a result of that, those projected rate increases actually declined in our updated analysis. So, it makes sense that if we can defer those capital costs through integration, that there are savings. The benefits that were identified include cost savings through capital. It included the ability to, again, have a more depth in a larger organization. Clearly, there are some economies of scale that benefit. What I would suggest to you is that I think that it is a reasonable consideration to continue to look at this in more depth. I think it's a... could well produce the benefits that have been identified. But I think in the meantime, you know, the question I would have would be, are there any other ways that the city can save relative to current operations, relative to current revenue, and maintain control? Because the one benefit that you do lose is, right now, this council has control over the utility system and investments and decisions, and while you'll still participate in a regional board, you won't have the same level of control that you experience today with respect to St. Cloud's operations. But I do think that, based on the study that was prepared, that it's certainly worth ongoing consideration.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Do we have any other questions? Discussion by council. Councilman Askew?
This is really a lot to take in. I guess the part I'm looking at, and it was kind of news to me on Monday, if we... I guess this is a question for Mr. Manzares, City Attorney. If this is approved... if we approve this tonight, if we get three votes or four votes or five votes, does this just happens? Or does this have to come back for another reading? Is this like an ordinance where I have to read it twice and vote on it? Or is this... you approve this tonight, this baby's going forward?
There's... it does not have to come back in front of the City Council, based on the current format that it's in. The agreement that you're being presented to you tonight, if approved, would essentially start a transition plan development, period. And with a date of it being established so that there could be a transfer of the assets to the management of Toho by October 1st. Assuming that plan was worked out, there's a lot of issues and moving parts that need to be worked out from an administrative perspective, and as soon as all that could work out and the transfer plan... transition plan could be put in place, then it would move forward. The council, of course, could change that as part of the terms of the agreement if you want. You could have it come back for you beforehand. It's not specifically intended right now that that transition plan would be approved by the City Council, but obviously, that's something that you could decide you'd want to do.
Thank you.
And again, the transition plan is more related to administrative administration and operation issues that have to be worked out for there to be an effective transition.
Mayor. Councilman Askew?
I'm just trying to come up with ideas here. Is there a way, if it was a... first of all, if everybody knows how I felt about the water, I was a hard no. I met with Todd, what did we meet, three times, I think? And we've negotiated a lot of stuff through the process, along with the city manager, and Bill's done a fantastic job, along with Mr. Manzares, in changing some things that would benefit the city a lot more. I think this is where... it's coming for me. This is just... seems like it's just news that was thrown at our citizens, like the... I mean, we've talked about it for years now, but all of a sudden, on Friday, when I got my agenda and I was looking at it Saturday and Sunday, I've realized that this is coming forward, and it's coming hard, and we need to make a decision. I didn't find out until Monday, and if we make a decision on this, this is a go. I do think that there should be some kind of breathing period here. Like, if we're passing an ordinance, which, believe it or not, we can change ordinances, it seems like if we approve this, then it's going forward, and really, nobody has a say or... and do I think that... I'm not a hard no anymore. I do think that there is some benefit to this. But again, I'm just one of five, and we're making a major decision about one of our largest assets in the city. So, I'm just kind of throwing it out to council. Is this something we can, you know... I'm not trying to kick the can down the road. I'm just, you know, this is probably news to a lot of people out there that this is coming at us. So, I'm just kind of leaving the floor open. Is it something we can talk about? Is it something we Mr... talk to Mr. Swindle, or, you know, I'm not 100% sure.
Mr. Swindle, if you can just speak to that.
Yeah, I think the piece is that, you know, largely, our plan has not changed from last fall from that workshop. We put a lot of additional, the details and the specifics around it. So, in that time, we've taken, I think, six, six months, seven months to resolve this. One of our big concerns is both St. Cloud and Toho have some... have projects that need to be moving forward. We've got to move forward with these projects, and they do look differently if it's Toho and St. Cloud or an integrated utility. And so, we did come with the proposal for approval that was based upon that direction and the discussion that we had with this council last fall in order to bring that forward. It is time-sensitive from those capital projects so that they can move forward into design.
Councilmember Matheny?
Mr. Urban had his light on before me.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
Well, I was just... I know I'm the new guy here, so I definitely... I understand that this is a major decision that the City Council is making, and I don't take this decision lightly at all. If you don't mind, since I'm new, I wrote down some thoughts that I had over reading through this agreement. Like I said, I take it very seriously, and I've read through the agreement multiple times. When I ran for this position, water was a major issue, and I really commend this City Council and our incredible staff, the utilities team here. They've been absolutely amazing in going leaps and bounds to make sure that all of our residents are taken care of. And I definitely... if this deal did go through, it would be something that that team would definitely be missed. The bottom line is, if we don't approve this, the rates are going to have to go up, and that's just a fact. We have some difficult decisions to make, of course, and I believe in making sure that our taxpayers and our residents are being taken care of in that respect. So, and I definitely respect Mr. Askew's opinion on this is a great decision that we have to make and that we should definitely be thinking about what we're doing here. But I don't think it's in the best interest of our city to keep kicking the can down the road. So, with that said, I would go ahead and make a motion for approval for this item.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban and a second from Councilmember Matheny. I have a second. Ms. Matheny, would you like to make a statement before we call for a vote?
Yes, please. So, I also wanted to say, this has been a conversation for six years that I've been on council. You know, what do we do with the water? What do we do moving forward? It is a very huge decision. And I also want to say to the staff of the City of St. Cloud, this is not any kind of negative reflection on the services that have been provided by our utility company. If you've been watching meetings for six years, I've been talking and having concerns about Cypress Lake and saying, are we going to bankrupt the city? How are we going to afford this? This project is more than our annual budget. What are we going to do? You know, I've been saying this for six years. So, you know, when this came forward, and we've had many workshops and conversations about it, you know, I tried to look at it from every perspective, right? Like, are the employees taken care of? Yes. You know, their positions are maintained. Everyone's getting a raise. They're able to stay on the city retirement program. They're even giving allowances to help with insurance. You know, everybody keeps their job, and they're even allowing them to stay in the City of St. Cloud if they wanted to. So, I really was like, okay, how do the... how are we protecting our employees? That was the number-one asset. You know, I also talked to TWA and said, obviously, you know of our water quality issues that we've been having. Are you still going to have that as a priority for the City of St. Cloud? What are you going to do with that? Are you going to keep the charge going that Ms. Craig has had going for the last year and a half? Like, that was very important, and they assured us that they would continue to help with the water quality issues. You know, $32.5 million in debt goes away from the City of St. Cloud. That's unheard of. Even when you talk to our finance director, she said she's never in her career seen a deal that the debt is taken dollar-for-dollar. Usually, it's a percentage or, you know, like a cents-on-the-dollar kind of a thing. You know, we have, you heard, a couple different estimates. We have between $150 million to $200 million in projects that need to be done in the City of St. Cloud in the next five years. How the heck are we going to afford that? You know, our rates are going to go through the roof. We've been trying to control the rates. We've been trying to look at different things, but the city, you know, just can't afford that. One of the big issues when I talked to Mr. Swingle was about the Myex plant that we've been having all those problems with. So, they are working on the Myex plant like day one. They're going to be rehabbing that plant and potentially replacing the treatment system. So, I'm just, you know, I tried to look at it from perspective to perspective. Our former councilmember Chuck Cooper always used to say, "The water in sewer was a cash cow." That's what he would always say. "Don't get rid of it as a cash cow." I would always argue with that, like, we have, you know, if you count up agendas over... over the last, you know, five months, you, you, millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars going out the door. So I used to say, where's the cash cow? I don't see it. So we get $2.2 million in intergovernmental, you know, transfer to our general fund, but they're guaranteeing 3.3. So again, it's like the, the benefit of the utility still comes to the city. So for me, I, I just, I, I tried to look at it from every perspective. Serving the citizens, the best water quality, the best rates, trying to, you know, protect the employees. I just don't see a way that I couldn't provide the second to Mr. Colby's motion.
Councilmember Trace.
Mr. Urban, sorry, Colby.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank staff on, on, in both entities, Toho and your board, and then Mr. Sturgeon and, and your staff. I mean, a lot of, a lot of work goes into this, and it's amazing that it, it came back to us in, in only six months, because this, this is an in-depth science project to try to figure out of how, how do you integrate, you know, two, two companies, essentially. They're, you know, still working in the same path, but it's two different companies. And then how to make, make sure that we get information that helps us make an informed decision. I honestly don't like to formulate opinions about stuff like this until we get the presentation, we get feedback from the, the one resident that wanted to speak. But, uh, you know, I just, I didn't organize this in any sort of fashion, but I've got a bunch of questions, pros, cons, so I just, I think I have some questions in here from Mr. Sturgeon, Mr. Swindle, maybe Ms. Craig, and Ms. Colazo. So if you guys are kind of close. First off, like, this wouldn't even be a conversation if the biggest two things weren't taken care of, which is our residents, ratepayers, and then also the employees. So I appreciate what's, what's been put into here to try to reduce rates for, for our, our residents, you know, simplifying permitting process, all of that kind of stuff, that, you know, would happen with this, but then also the employees as well, comparable benefits, pay increases, and pension, just making sure that everyone's taken care of is kind of the, the first step for us to even start having this conversation. I started to dig into kind of the financial situation of this, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of 20, 40-year assumptions kind of baked into this that just kind of get summarized into a number or two, versus, you know, actually diving deep into it. So first off, like Ms. Matheny said, taking $32 million of debt off the books, it's a great thing, and us not having to go into debt for, for future improvements as well, even though collectively, really, we will go into debt over things, because if we want to take it back, we're taking back what hasn't been paid off of that $32 million plus any new debt that's been put on. We didn't really have a say of how or when, but based on some of the financial analysis in here, with integration, hopefully, that debt, that, those capital needs are, are delayed. So our net position, if we want to take this back, take back the utility, would be more positive than if we just kind of were going on our own. First question, and it's kind of, I had to get the background of those two eye charts that were up there of the standalone basis and the integration basis for the financial management plan. First question was about rate increases, because in here, there were some assumptions of taking into account the Raptulus rate increases that we had, and then also reducing the rates for, for year one, and then Toho's rate increases in there as well. It looked like we essentially evened out at, what was that, 2028? Our kind of combined, the, the Toho's increased rate plus our, you know, projected rate kind of equalized at that 2028.
Yeah, and that's, that's not entirely uncommon, and part of that's driven by that we don't have, neither of, neither utility has.
Crystal ball?
Well, yeah, the, if, if we had 20-year capital programs, you'd see, you'd see those reflected, and, and those rates may look like that, and they may look different. So this really is a reflection that you've got the, the best information in that five-year window. And so those rates, those future rates are reflective of, you know, kind of a sustained basic capital program. I think the point that I would, that I would continue to go back to, that I am 100% confident in, is that the cost profile of the integrated utility is lower than the cost profile of the two utili, two utilities independently. So ultimately, the, whatever those rates are in the future, they will be lower as an integrated utility.
Oh, yeah, and that's, that's kind of the, part of the biggest positive of this is one plus one equals three in some of this, because you just get economies of scale that you wouldn't.
Absolutely.
Each of us individually wouldn't, wouldn't have otherwise. One of my questions on here as well is the fixed operation and maintenance numbers in the baseline year were about $2 million difference, but then, you know, that equates to $57 million over the next 20 years. I guess where does that?
Those are those two things that were shown on there as those reductions. So the, because we are providing our own services on some of those allocated admin, there's administration support, it's that, and that cost reduction that we had assumed within the customer service. Now, we expect that to, again, be greater than what's shown, but that, that's the only assumption that we've made with those.
Okay.
So, and, and that is, those, the remaining fixed operating costs, so maintenance, operations, we have not adjusted those from St. Cloud's numbers at all. The one thing that I would point out from that is, and it speaks a little bit to the, the statements from your rate consultant as well, is, yeah, there, there could, there's additional information that could be gleaned, but through approval of this, Toho's taking that risk. So if there's a miss on any of these assumptions, then it's, and it's assumption, it's an activity that needs to be done, ultimately, Toho's absorbed that risk. And we've absorbed that across our entire rate base. So not just within the city.
Yeah, and, and my worry with some of that is, we, on the operation main side, like, reserve replacement and some maintenance items that, you know, we've, for the past three years I've been on here, have paid the price for misses in previous years of, whether it's maintenance, whether it's fixing things that are broken, and it's cost us millions of dollars. And I just want to make sure that the assumptions in here aren't, you know, if we take this back in 15, 60, 100 years, that it's just reduced maintenance that kind of gets some of that financial benefit.
There's, there's no assumptions of reduced maintenance. And our, we operate our system as a single system. Your system will be folded into that, that is looking at the highest priorities, the needs that, that exist. But there are, some of these, the assumptions that we have made actually do address some of that deferred maintenance. So your Plant 2 improvements are related to that type of deferred maintenance and deferred process improvements. So there's, whether it's the initial budget assumption that's in your budget of $9 million, or whether it's the, the, what we think is a more realistic estimate for the rehab of that plant of 15 to 20 million, that one goes away. And so instead of investing 15 to 20 million in that plant that offers very minimal value, we're proposing $20 million into Plant 4 with that transfer permits that now supports an increased allocation and becomes a asset that continues to produce additional water. So that, those are some of the things that, it's not, there is no reduction in maintenance or deferral of maintenance activities. It's deferral or elimination of capital that we can replace with a different capital project that's a better utilization of funds.
Okay, so my question with that is for Ms. Craig. On, with that project in specific, you know, it, that capital plan for, for water treatment Plant 2, are we just throwing good money after bad at that? And is it, is that improvement something, improvement to water treatment Plant 4? Is that something we can do ourselves? Or is that we would have to integrate, mess with the permits to be able to make that improvement happen?
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. So Todd and his, his team took the information from our draft plan, which was not finalized. And so actually, we probably would, and he's right, the costs now have escalated so much, we wouldn't even, we haven't even submitted any projects for Water Treatment Plant 2. Our plan actually would be to put the money towards Water Treatment Plant 4, and expanding the plant for the additional 3 million gallons per day. But that said, I mean, we still need to move forward. You know, we have a list of projects, they have a list of projects, there are still economies of scale. We probably would not put, the reason we had, there are reasons that we were looking at Water Treatment Plant 2, but after a year's time, that's gone away, and we would go more towards Water Treatment Plant 4, without boring you, glazing you over with my passionate view, passionate view as, as a utilities person.
Well, and that's part of the, the strife with how that boundary was drawn. It was drawn more as a ultimate city boundary of this side of the roads in, in the city, this side of the roads out, but when you look at it at the utility side, it's, it's, it's not great for capital improvements, when you now have to have parallel pipes to serve customers on either side of the road.
Right, and there's a number of ways to get, to improve pressure up in the northeast side, and that's what we need to do. So in an ideal world, we would have had transmission, transmission system, a transmission grid system that would already have been able to provide water up to that area without having booster pumps and, and so forth. But we don't. So that's just was one option. Another option is to, and we have some transmission mains that we have planned, and booster pumps, which we could probably eliminate with the integration of Toho. But we still would need to expand Water Treatment Plant 4. They could probably feed with, if you want to, water from Sunbridge, and we can, there are still economies of scale. So there, I mean, I still, I see everything that we do where, is a, you know, we redo our, our demands annually, if not sooner, especially with the type of growth that we're experiencing. And with the costs that are increasing, we're constantly looking at, how can we optimize our system? And us, optimize where we're putting our resources.
Okay, and.
Can I just add one?
Yeah.
So one of the things, I, I completely agree with Marjorie, in that you could, you can transfer your improvements from Plant 2 to Plant 4. The difference is that if there's a, to, whether it's a 2 MGD or a 3 MGD expansion at Plant 4, if St. Cloud does that on its own, you still only have a 9 MGD permit. So you have increased, you've spent that $20 million. You have met your instantaneous maximum day capacity, but you haven't increased your ability to supply more water on an average day basis. Part of the strategy that we've developed is that, inside of a long-term agreement, we're willing to move permit over there. So now, that 9 MGD is now 11. So that additional money not only addresses your maximum day pumping, it addresses increase in capacity for you to be able to meet demand. So that is, the expansion might look identical, the expansion might cost the same amount of money. But the real difference is the value that it brings through us being able to leverage our alternative water supply project, projects out west, and move permitted capacity into your area to then support actually being able to use that expansion to better use.
Well, and we don't have, I mean, because we have a snapshot in time, we don't have a project on the books for an AWS-type improvement as well. So we could go after additional capacity through some other means, right?
That's correct. We could, and we have lots of ideas. That's one thing I'm not short on, is ideas. But there are, there are, and we've looked at changing the treatment process at the plant. But again, he's coming to the table with money to do the, the changes in the, in the treatment plant already. I mean, it's hard to argue with that and defeating the, the bond, but, I mean, I, I want to tell you that I've been in the business over 30 years also. I know I look like a teenager in my mind. But I've never, my staff are among the finest, if not the finest, staff that I've ever worked with. And they will be committed, knowledgeable, and passionate to our customers, no matter what. And whether that's to Toho, or the, to continue with the City of St. Cloud. We love our customers.
Understood, and there's never, never any question about it. You guys inherited.
Yes.
Something that, you know, you guys have done excellent work creating a solv and implementing it for the issues that you guys were given. On the, on the, taking over the $32 million of the debt, some of these might be a finance question. You know, we have a $263 million net position of our utility, or the company we have.
Correct.
And it's taken over $32 million debt. I mean, there's still assets that are still owned by the city, but it's, the value of that is, it's, it's a lot bigger than just the debt and the 3 million that we get as a pilot, you know, it's just. Next question is on Cypress Lake. $50 million, in, in both of the, the integrated and the baseline scenarios, it's $50 million future spend that we have. We've already spent, I think, 10, 10 million bucks. $50 million, ours is a lot more front and loaded versus the one in the Toho, in the integrated plan. How is that possible? Because I thought we had contractual obligations that, even if we did or didn't need the water, we had to outline, that, outlay that capital, because we.
Because of our allocation.
Yeah, I, I mean, everyone else is relying on everyone else to spend the money, so.
Right, it's the race to who needs the first drop first, right? Why don't you answer that?
Yeah, I can address that. So I mean, that, the, the challenge is that we all have to meet our demands when they arrive. And so absent, absent an alternative water supply project, you get into that situation where you need water sooner than Cypress Lake is likely to come on board. Deferring Cypress Lake is going to be, you know, getting it constructed by those timetables is going to be difficult. The issue is, is that if you need water ahead of time, which is likely, now you're in that temporary allocation situation where you've got to now invest for something that's only going to be online for, you know, it's that extra capacity, but that, that you're only going to be deliver on while you have that temporary permit. That's whatever that time period is, three years, five years. The district's likely to work with, with you, they're working with us on things, where it's, it, it would most likely be tied to the startup of Cypress Lake. And so that, that's the big difference, is we're bringing to bear these alternative water supply, other alternative water supply projects that benefits both St. Cloud and us, and that, that does help support all of those demands in an earlier time period.
Okay, so it's not, we wouldn't be changing a contract obligation with CFWI or the group that's.
Everyone wants to delay Cypress Lake as long as we can, so, you know, there's some practical implications of getting it, you know, we're, we're just now, like, fingers crossed, knock on wood, all the different things, that our concentrate disposal wells looking very positive, but still, it's a massive project to bring to bear. So to bring it to bear in those timetables is, is going to be challenging. But the, the two utilities that have the most likely need are, are going to be St. Cloud or Toho. I think some of the others are in better position in terms of their supplies.
But we're constantly looking at ways to optimize our existing resources and, and defer that first drop.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I always thought that we had to do it regardless if we needed the water or not, because everyone else was relying on it. You can't just have one partner that needs the water and.
The one part, when one partner has to have the water, then that will start to drive it. But there are also the practical limitations of when it can get built. So that's, that's the two challenges.
So some of the financial projections in the integrated model might have to change and, and pull forward based on when someone else needs the first drop?
Not based on where everyone else is at, no, that won't happen.
So then, could we update our financial model, push that?
You can, but you will have needs, so you'll need to update your financial model to make other investments to meet demands.
Okay.
I agree.
And then on both of them, kind of, there's like, it all comes, comes in a summation of net cash flows. There's net cash flow for FY 2022 through 2041. In the baseline scenario, it's a positive $9.2 million, and that's after all costs, all capital improvements, debt, transfers. In the integrated model, it's $92 million. What's, what's the big difference to make it a tenfold change?
This is Andy Burnham, he's with Stan Tech, our rate consultant.
Thank you for the question. As you look at the time periods that are summarized on that panel, excuse me, the biggest difference is the number of years. So if you look at the 26 to 41 time period, we've got a 15-year window there where the annual cash flows were generally increasing at about 3 to 4 million per year, the difference between the scenarios. So when you do the math on that with compounding, it has a higher net present value impact than the first five years, where we have lower cash flows. So that's why that difference gets bigger the farther out you look, because the annual cash flow streams are actually widening between the baseline and the integration scenario, as we played it forward. But as has been said, these are projections for 20 years out, that there's a lot of things that are going to change that need to be updated. So we tended to focus on the first five years, but recognize that there is compounding increases in the differences in cash flow under the integration scenario that could manifest itself, but there's a lot that we need to take into consideration when we make 20-year projections. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't put too much stock in, in that magnitude difference, because there's a lot of things that will change and move that over that time period.
My worry is, I'm looking that far out, because we, we're talking about a 60-year agreement, so I'm looking at that backend to see what things change, and are there things that we can do internally to, to get closer to that?
Sure.
I'll just add the piece two, and back to the discussion of those time periods and everything, is, one, we are talking about a 60-year agreement, but I want to go back and reemphasize that from all practical purposes, these are a series of 15-year agreements for the city of Saint Cloud, because, and that was, that was a response to your financial consultants that said, we want a longer-term commitment from Toho, but as the city, we want more flexibility. So, the 60 years Toho, the 15 years is your cancellation provision. So, I do just want to make that distinction. The other piece is, and I think this is where, there is, while there is uncertainty as we get out in those extended time periods, I continue to go back to those same observations, that lower cost profile, the lower capital cost profile, the lower, the better cost efficiencies, the economy scales holds true. So, whatever that margin is, it's a, it is a notable margin that is likely to widen, but it is very difficult to predict exactly what that is as you get into those far-out periods where, you know, no utilities are doing real accurate projections on certainly operating costs. Where utilities are starting to do more and more on longer-term capital cost projections. In fact, this year, we're launching a 50-year water supply plan out of these, for that exact type of discussion, because the water supply represents the largest cost investment that any utilities are going to make. Everything else, you can probably average out pretty good, and it's not going to drastically affect anything. So that's why we're launching a 50-year water supply plan this year. The consultant's already been hired, and that is to do exactly those things, to really plan for the future, to make sure that we're able to set up investments, to make sure that we're optimizing those. But that's, that's the type of thing that will affect that cost differential out farther.
Yeah. When I look at this regionally of, Seminole County is built out, Orange County effectively in the next 15 years will be built out. It's Lake and Osceola and some of Lucia of, that'll be those growth areas. We have the CFWI down here and these issues we have to work through, but it seems like Lake County and further north, they don't have to worry about it. I don't know if it's the geology and everything else, but like, I don't see them having a lot of these discussions that we're having to have based on water supply.
So, so Lake will be affected by, is affected by CFWI. You're right, though, as you get out of that CFWI constraint, but by and large, CFWI encompasses the entire Orlando urban metro center. So, every utility inside of that CFWI boundary is having these discussions at some level. I will say that Saint Cloud, Toho, the entire stopper group is farther along in those groups than most. We, as tough as these discussions are, we're in a much better position than many of the utilities, because that 2025 limitation was a surprise to many people. And so, there's a lot of utilities that are really scrambling. We get calls, Haynes City and others that are, you know, "Do you have water that you can sell?" Nope, sorry. And so, there's many utilities that, that was a real surprise, that are now looking for those alternative supplies. And they're not readily available. So, a couple things just to note on that. Having that permit on Cypress Lake is significant, because that is a viable, permissible, it is permitted, it is a real project. Toho has some of the best permits on the Kissimmee Basin, so our Shingle Creek permit and our Toho reservoir permit, you cannot get those permits today. The fact that we had those, they cannot be replicated, because since those were issued, the new Kissimmee River Rule has been passed. That Kissimmee River Rule has restrictions on the downstream water supplies related to both downstream users in Lake Okeechobee and West Palm and the Kalusahatchie. Also has environmental limitations with snail kites and other things on the Kissimmee River. The new limitations they have are so restrictive that when you look at reliability, my Shingle Creek permit is over 90% reliable. My Toho reservoir permit is about 75% reliable. The new permits that you would get are 30% to 40% to 50% reliable. Even worse than that, we could plan on it if it was 40% reliable in a year, but they're not. They're 100% reliable a lot of years, and then there's an eight-year window where you can't use them. And you can't afford to invest 30 mil, it's not even storage. You can't, you're talking about many years on end where you couldn't use the project. So you could end up with investments that are tens or hundreds of millions of dollars that have to sit there idled because of those permit limitations under today's permitting standards. You will, there's a chance you're going to see other projects like Cypress Lake, you know, there is definitely projects like that. We talked a little bit about alternative supplies, those impact offsets. It's something that Toho benefits from geographically. When you get to the western portion of our service territory, we have rapid infiltration basins, those connect with the Floridian aquifer. They actually recharge that aquifer that we use, that's why we can take advantage of that value. You don't have the same magnitude of benefit here, because you have 100 feet of Hawthorne clay that exists between the surface and that Floridian production zone. So that, the, some of the alternative supplies are more challenging over in this area. So there's geographic limitations that do come into play.
Geological, too.
Someday, so we will, the entire state is heading toward desalinization, whether it's inland desalinization or going to the ocean, and what's in the regulatory framework being developed right now is forms of indirect and potable reuse.
Well, and that's, all we have to do is look at California and how they're handling water right now is going to be us in 50 years, right? I mean, that's.
It's, well, and that's, it's very pertinent, because last week, I was on a panel with the Metro, the general manager for the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, talking about conservation, drought management, and water supply planning. And so, it's, the issues that we discussed, the approaches, the partnerships, they're very similar. We are at different stages. They do have different water laws, they have different, they're bringing their water in via surface water transmission from snow melt and things of that nature. So it, there are differences, but there are a lot of similarities.
Well, and we also have no control, the water manager districts control the subsurface and surface water, like, we have no control over that unless we already have the permit.
That's correct. And so, you know, and that regulatory environment is something that will continue to evolve now as an organization, and independent of this discussion, as an organization, we do try to very much influence those, those rules, those rulemaking. I sit on, I'm actually on the steering, I'm one of the steering committee, I am the utility representative for the steering committee for CFWI. And so, we do try to make sure that we're, have a voice, that we are participants in those, but there's many voices as well.
Thank you. Next question is for Ms. Colazo.
One of our questions is about this 65th North Group Report. Is that something that we contracted, or is that something that Toed it, or like, I guess where did this report come from, and it wasn't really?
This was contracted through Environmental Utilities.
Okay, through us.
Yes, sir.
Because it paints this picture of, I always thought we had a ton of debt on the water sewer side, but looking at some of this and how other entities have their net position and how much debt they have for how much revenue, it seems like we're all, almost like the low person, like, we're almost being conservative on our, on our, on our capital spend and our debt side.
Absolutely, sir. So, they did provide a comparison, and I want to be fair, is also a snapshot of certain, right? It's not a global. Your debt policy puts us in a position that we are always protecting the money that isn't ours, which is, belongs to the residents. So therefore, we took an extra added approach that is not in your policy, and when I came on board, there wasn't a reason why capacity and how capacity was measured. So that's what you received in the information. So we are on the lower end, however, it's a matter of what we can pay and what should we dead out, is the big question for sustainability purposes. That, again, strategically aligns. I added that caveat, because I didn't want to be in a position to ever have that decision factor for the city. I didn't think it's our right to do that. And this measures it based on our asset assessed value, our rating, and it takes a lot more factors. That puts a methodology behind it, sir.
Okay. And did, I don't expect you to have this answer, but do you know what the financing and debt strategy is of Toho versus ours? Like, are they grossly dissimilar? Are they close, or?
So I think the correct answer for that, it's about capacity as well, right? It's really bridging two partnerships here that you can do more with different objectives. I think that both entities have a capital plan, however, they pivot on different ideas and models of what they can do. They are injecting much more money than we could honestly leverage, because even at 145 mil, which we've talked about is a conservative approach, and, you know, it's still something we have to question how much we could dead out and do. So, it's really about what direction we're going to go, it's not who's doing more or who's, you know, better, it's just the different plans and stuff.
Yeah. And I'd like to just add a little bit of our review on what the underlying, some of the underlying reasons of that. So, debt to equity is not one of the predominant measures that we use when we're setting rate and borrowing and things like that. That's a measure of what the, the overall asset value of your system is versus what debt you have. Saint Cloud's a high-growth system that has a significant number of contributed assets from development and growth and over time, so you haven't incurred any debt to get those. But what really ends up mattering is your debt service coverages. And so, the biggest exposure point that you have, and I'll let your Finance Director, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that as you have those significant spend of that capital needs compared to the size and scale of your system, that's where that you have to be very cautious, that you don't erode your debt service coverages, make sure that you've got adequate cash on hand for cash flows. And so, those, that becomes the very important piece. One of the differences in Toho, we do have high growth as well, but you have to remember that when Toho was formed, part of the mission for Toho was to deal with some of the, the private utilities that existed. And so, those had acquisition costs associated with them, so they were true acquisitions. So there's, there was debt that was incurred that was not developer contributed. So we've got some slightly higher debt in areas where we had to buy a system to be able to pull that in, where that same type of, that same quantity of infrastructure for you may have been contributed as far as a developer contribution. So that debt to equity is really more of a picture of how you grew, rather than your financial status. So I would encourage you that as you look at financial position, is to look at debt service coverages, cash on hands, and things of that nature.
Well, and you, so like, the example you were given was like on the Point Santa system, you guys had to buy that, and that's why they have different rate structures and?
Initially, but they are on the same rate structure. Yeah. We, Toho has a single rate structure across all our entire service area. That was done, I don't remember how many years ago, before I got here, but, so initially, there were different rate structures, but our board, back to the original mission of our member governments, wanted that equity across their service territory. So we have a single unified rate.
Okay. And then when Toho was formed, it was, it was formed out of the city of Kissimmee, right? And it was sold, or, you know, you guys created a different intergovernmental entity, but was that, were the assets purchased from?
They were not, they were not purchased, but they were transferred.
So they were just transferred, and then they get their 12%?
Mm-hmm.
What did you call it? Path, or?
Payment in lieu of taxes, pilot.
Yeah. Okay.
And now, I think there was debt defecence on that original Kissimmee transfer as well, so.
Okay.
Andy just said the rate consolidation was about 10 years ago. So, I don't know if Finance Director would like to add anything to my comments as far as debt service coverage and cash flow, but those are the predominant drivers we use.
I'd have to concur with that, and, you know, that is where we're going, is that that first measure is really what we inherited, and now as we get more robust, we are trying, it's about capacity and what we can really realistically do to make that mortgage payment, right? And we don't want to put a strain on the enterprise, because they're there to really, not profit per se, but to afford the business that they're in and provide the quality of service to the residents or the community they serve.
Because part of the way I'm looking at some of the financials of this are, we've got a lot of restricted and unrestricted funds in the bank. Like, we have a big piggy bank, right? We have, we have a lot of necessary capital that we see down the line, and we just got to make a decision of, we have this big piggy bank, we have this, these big issues coming up. It seems like we're using our, the cash that's in the bank to reduce the rate in the near term for the, for the residents, kind of chewing up that cash and equalizing, you know, how much cash we hold on hand. And then because of the integration, unified, we are able to push out some of the capital expense, which creates that synergy for the combined entity. Does that kind of make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Next question is for, I don't know, Mr. Sturgeon, maybe. So we currently have, you know, this is a discussion between two entities. At one point, we talked about, kind of, the conversation started with, could we sell this? Could we have, you know, OUC take, you know, do the same thing? And I know they don't deal with sewer treatment, but like, how do we get to the one individual group? I guess we had the workshop, is that kind of where we made that decision?
Mayor.
Yes, cool.
Have you recognized? Thank you. Mr. Chase, that's exactly what happened at the workshop back in, it was actually a budget workshop back in August. Consensus from the council was to work with Toho to look at an interlocal agreement of how to integrate our utilities.
Another question, just kind of a miscellaneous question with regard to design standards. You guys talked about the, our annexation agreement now and our agreement, but like, the design standards, they're pretty similar between Toho and Saint Cloud. What's the plan for that?
So initially, we need to operate in parallel, just from a timing standpoint, but we would look to try to align those design standards as much as possible. So need to walk through, really, across the board, our view on this transition is that this is a take the best from both entities. I fully expect that there's going to be things that we say that, wow, Saint Cloud, you're doing this great, you're doing better than we are, we want to pull from you, and there's going to, and vice versa. So that's exactly the approach that we would use from design standards. There's one place that we've had that already that we're looking at. We use our asset management systems, the city uses CityWorks, and we use N4. We've actually already, before this conversation ever arose, we're looking at potentially transitioning to CityWorks. So I think there's those types. So across the board, we will take a look at how the city works, how we work, and what the best integration of those is. And so, we do that with design standards as well.
Okay. And then, we have a fancy acronym for it, but our reuse and our irrigation strategy, is that something that both entities would kind of have moving forward?
So, you're talking about the different zones that you have?
Yeah.
I think that's.
Go with that acronym. Saint Cloud, something?
I think it's a good approach. We need to take a look at, I think it's a very reasonable approach. It's the same type of thing we need to, I think there is value of not adding reclaim infrastructure if there's never an anticipation of getting reclaimed there. That's one of the approaches that was taken. The challenge becomes really knowing what never means. So we need to take a close look at that and see, but, starting back to that same answer, that we need to take a look at the approach that's been used. That would change, because one of, the conclusion that was drawn regarding the upper Narcoosi corridor was very valid. I had reviewed the work that your staff did, and as a standalone system, concur with it, but it's a great example of where, as we have this integration conversation, we expect to be able to interconnect with some of those areas that you wouldn't be feasibly able to serve today. So, you know, that's where you get into that challenge of, does it make sense to not have that tool available to you or not?
Okay. I think I hit my hour time limit I gave for myself. But like, this is, this is important to me, because, you know, I don't take it lightly, because Saint Cloud's budget is balanced for us to provide our services of police, fire, parks, all that, based on our enterprise funds. Our business accounts are the things that balance our budget for us and allow us to exist as a city. And this is a big decision. And then, you know, if this is approved, hopefully this is a great partnership that moves forward forever. But if it's not, I hope we, as the two separate entities, can, can find these synergies and figure out some of these strategies for us to work better together and, you know, kind of deal with these, these water allocation issues and capital planning kind of together.
I think, I have, you know, I obviously was here before, and we will, we very much believe in working together with our government partners. But just like I've been talking to you about risk for the organization that I lead, I need to manage risk too. So there's many things that are on the table through this, because of the nature of the longevity of these agreements, that we are willing to do, that just in a simple, short-term interlocal that we could not do. And so, that's where the real difference is in what we're able to put on the table, is that longevity, getting those systems in place. By the time those are in place, they can look different, so that, you know, if, if it is unwound, or if there ever was a cancellation, that moving to that bulk agreement. But through this period of moving permits around and capital investments, trying to do that at the pace we both need to do, capital expansions amongst two government entities is virtually impossible, and the risk that's associated with moving forward is not something that would be tenable.
Thank you, Councilman Mercini.
Thank you. I forgot one thing, and I'm going to see if Mr. Urban maybe will make a friendly amendment, but. But when you read the agreement, you know, it said that we would go to the TWA rates by October 1st. But there's also some language in there that the city can elect to do it as soon as they want. So I would like, if we could add to the motion to approve, to ask the city manager just as absolutely soon as possible that we can. I know there's a little bit of tech issues that are gonna have to happen, but absolutely as soon as we can to go to the TWA rate structure. If you would add that to your...
Yes, I would be willing to add that to my motion, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, before you call the question, I'd like to make a few comments and thank some people. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Swingle and the Toho team. This analysis and this negotiation has been very transparent and open. They've been very straight with us. I think we did our due diligence. And I want to thank my team, Dan Monzares, who actually worked for you, but he's been instrumental in helping us. Veronica Miller, who's ill tonight, cannot be here. She was my point person. Mimi Tron, Marjorie Craig, who's probably one of the best strategic planners I've ever seen in, in water supply. And Don Edwards, who, he played our devil's advocate as we went through our pros and cons. And again, thank you, team, for what you've done. And I also want to thank our Saint Cloud Utilities team. We met with them, we've been straightforward with them and told them, and it's always been my goal, if we were gonna move in this direction, to protect our employees, and I think we've done that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm ready to call for the question, but I want to say I believe this proposal is good for our city residents. I think we've been kicking a can, trying to give a discount in our rates for, ever since I've been on the council. We'll still be able to provide quality service. I believe this is a good proposal for our Saint Cloud employees. I certainly would like to be able to walk away tomorrow and be able to give them all the kind of raise that, an increase that they're proposing here. It certainly is financially advantageous to the city of Saint Cloud, and I'm not gonna go on anything else. You've heard everything, so I'd like to call for the question. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
No.
Councilmember Trace?
No.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
The motion carries three, two.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here, Todd, and your staff, and I appreciate the amazing patience of all of you that have been here waiting for your items to come up. We will move forward now with our consent agenda. Give them a minute just to make their way out. All right, if you could please go outside and visit. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any of the items on the consent agenda that the staff is wanting to, or the council's wanting to address? Councilmember Matheny?
Hi, I'd like to pull item number C for discussion and F for a separate vote.
Item C?
C, with a cap.
Thank you. Thank you, that's the only line I see. We'll go to item number C. Ms. Matheny?
Thank you so much. So I'm sure I wasn't alone with the council members struggling with this item for the next phase of the renovations. And I started looking at it, you know, because I have kind of experience in this whole world, you know, is there a way we could do things or postpone things, or is there some way we could try to help us, like, move this project forward? But, you know, the price increases are just astronomical with COVID. So one of the items I was, I wanted to bring up to council is, I was looking at the bollard plan, and that is, if you don't know what the bollards are, those are those, you know, structures that prevent cars from driving into, you know, streets when we have festivals or parties or things like that. And I know the city staff made sure to include those because I was not happy in the New York renovations of the way the bollards were handled. But looking at the plans and the way the bollards are laid out, there's 124 bollards, I think is the number. It's over 120 bollards that are proposed as part of the downtown renovation. 124. So I've got the plans, and I was looking at exactly where they're proposed. And they're proposed at the end of Pennsylvania at 10th Street, makes sense. And they're proposed down at, you know, US 192, makes sense. And then they cross, I don't know, five or six times across 10th Street between Massachusetts and Florida. Like, five or six different times they cross over, like, cross, you know, and, and then they cross once north of Pennsylvania, or north of 10th on Pennsylvania, and then where the Loop Road comes around, where the barbecue place is, they cross twice there. I was like, okay, I think we've gone a little overboard with our bollards. And that line item is $1.2 million. So we can, my intention is to move forward with the project, but I would like to direct the city manager and his staff to go to the contractor and work a change order with respect to this line item of work. This is a very standard practice, and there is an FDOT spec about this. If you change a line item quantity higher or lower than 25%, they have the right to renegotiate the dollar amount, which makes sense, right? If you say, I'm gonna have 10,000 widgets, and they give you a price, and then you say, I just want five widgets, there's gonna be a differential in price. But I think, you know, we could potentially cut the $1.2 million in half, but also get a plan that makes a little more usable sense. We cross 10th Street, like I said, I think, five times, but there's nothing on 11th or 12th on the side streets. So I just think, I, I'm not sure how that got kind of laid out in that fashion. I don't know if it was more of an events-type item, but I think a lot of that can be handled with the big concrete barriers that we're used to, because they're gonna have to have them on the side streets anyways. I just think that's a lot of bollards. So I would like to move this forward for approval, but ask the city manager to work with his staff to do a change order on that line item of bollards. And if there becomes an issue with it, and they're not able to negotiate it, or, you know, if they basically say, yeah, sure, we'll give you a dollar in credit, well, then maybe keep the number of bollards, but redistribute them around the downtown area in a more usable fashion. And I guess that's, that's my motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do we have a second?
I would second, I just, if I may, Mayor, I have a letter of support for this item from...
So will you make a second then?
Yes, sir.
So we have a second from Councilmember Urban with the changes that have been proposed by Councilmember Matheny. You may go ahead.
Okay. I have a letter of support for this item from the downtown business group as well as Saint Cloud Main Street. They had just asked...
Will you mark a little closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. They had just asked to make sure that, would you like me to read the letter?
You go ahead.
Okay, all right. Please accept this letter as support of, for the resolution 2022-02R and its approval to move this project forward. Understanding associated issues on this subject, we would like to ensure the following items are considered. Revitalization project was waited since 1999 inception of Main Street program. When our first phase in New York Avenue was put in place, we were on the right track. This improvement has had nothing but positive results for our downtown business community. Current costs associated with it will clearly not go backwards, or at least anytime soon. So as we held off during COVID, and now considering the delay due to bid cost, what will be the next reason to delay, what will be the next reason to delay it again? Not to mention potential changes to the complexion of our future council to understand the issues and what has led us to this point today. It is our understanding that funding has been put together to do the project, including state funding acquired. If delaying or denying the project isn't the money we may or may not be able to access in the future. We have many business building owners who have plans to make improvements to their buildings, but have held off until this project is started or completed. We need to recognize the additional improvements that will be made and the opportunity of additional tax revenues, both in property and sales taxes with such improvements. We have experienced huge leaps in businesses and numbers, kinds of businesses and customers in our downtown since the first phase was complete, and have been anticipating this next phase as the next catalyst after COVID to excite our community and business. Please take this item into consideration upon making your decision. So I definitely agree with, with Councilmember Matheny or Deputy Mayor Matheny. As long as this doesn't delay the project any further, I think it needs to keep moving.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Yeah, $1.2 million for bollards, that's, that's a lot. But I know it does make it, these are the ones that, like, you lift out of the ground, makes it a lot simpler to shut down streets.
Correct. That's the ones I wanted, was the ones that went down into the ground, and we didn't have to have staff carrying bollards and things like that.
Yeah.
But it just didn't make sense to me. There was a crossing of bollards at the, at each alleyway that comes out onto 10th Street. So it was like, you know, between Massachusetts and New York, there's a set on 10th Street, and then you get to where the driveway comes around in front of City Hall, there was a couple there. Then you had at Pennsylvania on the north end, south of 10th Street, which makes sense, right? If you have, but then there was another set on the other side of Pennsylvania Avenue. Then there was another set that's to the east of that between Pennsylvania and Florida. And then there was like two more up where it comes around the bar. It was just too much. I just don't think, you know, there's like 25 steps between all these bollards. So I think if we could, I have confidence in the city manager and his staff that they could negotiate a change order. And like I said, if they can't negotiate the change order, then let's redistribute the location of these.
Okay. My question is around the brick sliding issues we're having with the current, current road and, went up, Don, Mr. Edwards. Part of, part of my discussion was with staff during my briefing was, it was because of the historic bricks. But then I go down 9th in front of City Hall, and a lot of those are shoving as well, and they're the new bricks. So I just want to make sure, whatever spec we have is gonna fix that.
Right. Don Edwards, Public Works Director. I'm confident that we are gonna follow the FDOT spec, and I do not believe we'll have any problems with this, this phase of the project.
Okay. But then also, I don't know if it was street sweeping, pulling out sand in there, or I, whatever issues we're having, we're fixing it?
I, I poked and prodded and as much as I could to find out what has caused the problem there. And I've landed on something. I'd rather not say it publicly, I'd be happy to describe it offline. It's not verified, but I trust the person, and I trust what he said, and I think I know what the problem is.
It's the ants, aren't they?
Yes.
And then timing, I didn't see schedule in here in the, in the bid proposal, I could have missed it because it's 500 pages. Will this be, when will this be complete, if we kick it off tonight?
I don't know.
Not, not date, but like before Thanksgiving, before Christmas?
Oh, before that.
I've seen the schedule, and I think it's ambitious. I think the contractor's probably going to be asking for an extension.
And is there LD in the liquidated damages in there?
There, there are, yes. But let me see, with this being, yeah, I would say by Thanksgiving is what I would estimate.
Okay. That's, I mean, that's...
And probably before that, but just to be conservative.
I just wanted before the holidays, I mean, that's the biggest thing for me.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes. I almost called you Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Trace, I've actually given direction if it was processed tonight and approved for, just note a start date of March 14th. Weather pending, you know, I think, I think Don's, that's a good projection, so, but knows to proceed by March 14th.
And then this, this motion, you guys are including the bid alternative number one, right? For the, I guess it's the, it looks like strengthened base and a little bit of GeoGrid.
Actually, I might need Leslie to answer that.
Leslie, can you?
Do you recall about the, the alternative or alternate being part of the recommendation?
It's alternate one.
Being included in, okay.
But then we also get credit for, if it's changing the base type, we get credit for the base type that's not gonna have to be put in?
I'm afraid I can't answer that either right now.
As long as you guys make sure that happens, then I'm good.
Well, I...
We approve the maximum. I think it included alternative one and a 10% contingency, so you guys...
I can, I can guarantee that we will be cost-effective, whatever we do.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm okay with the, the bollard thing, but what concerns me is that there's some folks that will have an event out there and these plastic things that they set up, they can't get the concrete ones for these small events, like, the one I could think about is the Garage Bar did a big stage, and it was pretty cool, and, and it's, it's hard to block those off. Should we, like, just look at the beginning of Pennsylvania and the end of Pennsylvania or something like that?
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's like, just, those two locations make sense to me.
The other ones, I get it.
All the ones across 10th Street and on the north side of Pennsylvania, on the north side of 10th on Pennsylvania, I wasn't sure the effectiveness of that.
And this is probably more for Don or the city manager. You know, you go to Winter Garden, and there's bricks everywhere, but you'll notice there's a couple city employees that actually take care of them. They maintain them. It's not like you put it out there like New York and just go, hey, I'm done with it. No, you have to go back in and like, take care of those, because those little potholes become big hot potholes. And talking to some of our merchants, some like it because it slows things down, but I'm not sure it always slows them down, because you can hear it in the shop, like rattling stuff. And then I think we also should look into, and I don't know, might be the downtown business group or something, should we allow giant semi trucks coming down our brick roads?
Yeah, weight limits?
Yeah, should we have a weight limit? I'm, I'm not sure, so.
We can certainly look at that, Councilmember Askew. And, and like I said, you know, poke and prod, I've been, I've been poking Don about this since he got here, his new set of eyes, and it became personal New Year's Eve. I told you my wife, I'm face planted out there in New York in one of those little potholes. So we're working on strategies to how we're gonna maintain those roads moving forward, either additional staff focused on that or using contractors to do that. So we're, we're looking at that option right now.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I had one other thing I wanted to say, sorry, I'm like the, like, I forgot one thing each, each item. But I was thinking about the inspection during construction, and is it possible to assign a dedicated city inspection person to be out there the entire time it's under construction? Like, not a person who's just getting this lumped on to other things they gotta do, and then they, you know, that happens to me a lot on county projects, like, we have county inspection, and we say, hey, can you go look at this? Well, you know, they drive through once a day, but like, actually reassign work or hire somebody and have one person out there dedicated to watch the construction, if that's possible.
So absolutely can do that.
I don't wanna do, hire a CEI, because that'll be 10% of the construction cost, which will be $900,000.
So, so Mr. Edwards, just give me a thumbs up, we can certainly do that. The other thing is, we, we requested a proposal from ZHA as an owner's rep to do the quality assurance on all the construction, so we're waiting for that. I don't think it's gonna be that expensive. I think it's a good investment. We did learn a lot of things from the last phase, so, and again, a new fresh set of eyes, and Mr. Edwards, I have full faith in him that he'll make sure the project is done correctly.
I just want to say, on this amendment that we're making, that we're giving the staff the authority to make a final decision on what they feel is best, but certainly seek to try and save any money you can and reduce the bollards if it's practical.
Yes, sir.
Are, are we all in agreement with that? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
I don't know if we took public comment on this.
No, we did not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. I haven't asked for public comment. Would anyone in the public like to comment? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?[1750.51]
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
We want to move forward with that project, that's for sure. Would anyone, Mr. Sturgeon, your line is on?
If I could, Mayor, before we move on, and I was remiss in my duties on the water integration with Toho, I didn't recognize our finance director. And I also want to recognize her for two reasons. One, for all her help and support on that and her brilliant financial mind. And also she made the presentation, didn't use any Marine Corps jargon.
Or nothing down to the penny.
Wendy, I apologize, I wrote it down. I didn't say it, but thank you. Thank you very much.
I was expecting down to the penny, too. I don't know what happened.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to the remainder of our consent agenda. Would anyone like to speak to the consent agenda?
Item F. Did you want to do that now? You had pulled item F.
I wanted to vote separate on F.
On item F?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that. Just go to item F.
I just want a separate vote on that.
That's all?
Mm-hmm.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to item F?
Motion approved, resolution 2022-027 Romeo.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, Deputy Mayor Trace. We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
No.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Did I overlook any other items that you pulled?
No.
All right. We're back to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the adoption of our consent agenda? Or do we have questions?
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Askew and a second from Councilmember Matheny for the adoption of items A through L minus item C and F. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to the item one and two under public hearings. Will you please read those?
Final public hearings for ordinance number 2021-21, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 91.8 acres identified as Pine Grove Reserve located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and west of Pine Grove Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of low-density residential to approximately 91.8 acres identified as Pine Grove Reserve located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and west of Pine Grove Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendations and proof of publication, applicability and effect, subraibility, copies on file and effective date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Stark, Transportation Manager. The items before you today is the Pine Grove Reserve voluntary annexation. This project is contiguous with the city. It abuts the city limits on the western property boundary and has the existing future land use designation of low-density residential in the county and has the low-density residential zoning classification in the county as well. This proposal meets the strategic plan goals for growth management. And on July 6th, staff recommended approval of the annexation item. The Planning Commission heard this item on October 19th and recommended approval. And you all heard this once on November 18th. Based on the 16 findings, you all recommended approval five zero. And we'd ask that the City Council approve this ordinance 2021-21. The companion item for the Pine Grove Reserve project is the comprehensive plan amendment. It's the same property at the same location, of course. The future land use designation that they have now is low-density residential. Of course, you all know that in the county that allows up to eight dwelling units per acre. In the city, the same land use designation allows up to four dwelling units per acre. It's compatible with the surrounding area and there's no adverse impacts on city facilities. This meets the same strategic plan goal for growth management and with the same dates, July 6th, August 12th, and, well, you all heard this item as well. It's not on the slide, sorry. November 18th, you recommended approval five zero. And based on the 16 findings, we'd ask for approval. Additionally, I'll add that we transmitted the comprehensive plan amendment to the state after that November hearing. We received from, some feedback from them. They asked for a copy of the traffic study moving forward, but did acknowledge as well that there's a reduction in the, in the intensity or density that will be allowed by the land use designation with the coming into the city and, and what our land use designation would allow for. And the applicants here, if you have any questions for them, on the February 24th agenda, you all will hear the companion PUD zoning application as well.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
I'll keep my mask on because I forgot to shave. I had a lot to say, but Commissioner Trace wore me out. So if there's any questions, we're happy to answer.
I stuck to an hour.
All right. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this, these items? If not, we'll have discussion and our motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2021-21. A motion by Councilmember Matheny and a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do I have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2021-23?
Still moved.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number three.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-01, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning classifications of approximately 0.92 acres identified as 1801 Delaware Avenue located south of 17th Street, north of Reese Court and east of Delaware Avenue from planned unit development PUD to residential multi-family dwelling district R3, zoning classifications on the official zoning map, filing of the planning recommendation and proof of publication, subraibility and effective date.
Thank you. Erin Stark, Transportation Manager. This proposal, like she said, is for 0.92 acres. It's a project that was annexed into the city as a PUD. The future land use designation is medium-density residential. It has the planned unit development zoning classification. They're seeking the R3 multiple-family dwelling district. It's compatible with the surrounding area and has no adverse impacts on the city facilities. It meets the growth management strategic plan goal. And on November 29th, DRC recommended approval of this request. The Planning Commission heard this item on December 21st and recommended approval as well. And we'd ask for the City Council's action. You all heard this item as well earlier in January and recommended approval based on the 16 findings. There was one item brought up in that last meeting was there was a little scribbler's error on our future land use map and we corrected that and it shows the R3 is on the southern property boundary now.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak to this item?
Good evening. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering, 2017, 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. Here representing the applicant owner. We respectfully request council's consideration of the recommendation of approval, both by staff and the Planning Commission. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Motion to approve. We have a motion from Councilmember Askew. I'll make a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, you call the, call the roll.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
If you will, read items four, five and six.
Final public hearings for ordinance number 2022-02, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 42.45 acres identified as Tyson Reserve located north of KC Durham Road, east of Nora Tyson Road and west of Chatsworth Circle in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-03, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of low-density residential to approximately 42.45 acres identified as Tyson Reserve located north of KC Durham Road, east of Nora Tyson Road and west of Chatsworth Circle, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, subraibility, copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-04, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of R-1B, single-family dwelling compatible with a low-density residential future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2022-03 for approximately 42.45 acres identified as Tyson Reserve located north of KC Durham Road and east of Nora Tyson Road and west of Chatsworth Circle, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, subraibility and effective date.
Thank you. Erin Stark, Transportation Manager. And I swear, at upcoming meetings, there will be other planners coming before you as well. I'm just fleshing out those ones that you heard from me last, last month on. This case, annexation 21008 for 42.45 acres is a proposal east of Narcusi and north of 192. The background on this project, it's contiguous and reasonably compact. There's a signed petition from all the property owners. Of course, it's adjacent to the city limits on the eastern property boundary, but it's kind of surrounded almost at this point by the city. It's the existing future land use designation in the county is low-density residential and it has the agricultural development and conservation zoning in the county. It meets the growth management strategic plan goal. And on October 7th, staff and DRC recommended approval. The Planning Commission on December 21st recommended approval. And based on the 16 findings, this is the second public hearing. We'd ask for your approval of 2022-02. The next item is the companion comprehensive plan amendment. It's for the same property at the same location. It has the low-density residential land use designation. It's in the city, they're proposing the same designation with that reduction in density. It's compatible with the surrounding area and has no adverse impacts on the city facilities. It meets the same growth management strategic plan goal. And on those same dates, staff, the Planning Commission recommended approval. And we'd ask for the City Council's approval of ordinance 2022-03. And then the final item is the zoning map amendment. This project is requesting the R1B, single-family dwelling zoning district. It is compatible with the surrounding area and proposes no impacts on the city facilities. It meets the growth management strategic plan goal. And on the same dates, it went to prior public hearings and had DRC staff recommendation, Planning Commission recommendation. And this is the second hearing for this item and we'd ask for approval of ordinance 2022-04.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak to this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Excuse me. John Adams, J. Whitten and Associates, planners for the project, representing the applicant and owner. 316 Church Street, Kissimmee, Florida. We, there was a comment made by Councilmember Urban at our first hearing that I'd like to briefly address. He was concerned whether or not the road network could handle additional development out there. And you may very well be right. In fact, I'm not sure if the road network will handle the existing development that's on the ground out there. But the real question to ask is how do you fix it? Well, there's two ways. The first way is to take a project such as what we've proposed, which is compliant with your comprehensive plan, compliant with Land Development Code, which will require a traffic impact analysis, which will professionally identify specific improvements in the roadway network that are necessary to accommodate this development. Take a project that's compliant with the Narcusi Community Plan. In fact, we have a framework road, which is part of the Narcusi Community Plan on our east property line. That is an extension of Zuni Road. The Zuni Road is one of three north-south framework roads in our Cusi Community Plan. And Zuni Road goes from Osceola County down with some, working with your transportation department, along with the county's transportation department, some realignment necessary because of some existing development to the south of us. But it will continue all the way down into 192 and provide a parallel facility for Narcusi Road, which will help relieve or at least provide the opportunity to relieve some of the traffic on Narcusi Road. Other improvements that the TIAA will identify are Nora Tyson Road and Lilian Lee Road, the intersections. All those will be professionally identified in assignments. In addition to that, mobility fees will be paid by the developer, which will help in the county and the city both in maintaining the existing roadway network. But most importantly, what this project will provide is a new tax base, new taxpayers to annually create some funding to assist the city and the county in maintaining those roadways. That's called good growth management. Your other option is to deny projects. I would caution you there because that only leaves you with one significant funding source to fix the road problem. And that's your existing tax base, your existing taxpayers. We already know how popular increased taxes are from when the county put a penny sales tax up on a public referendum. It was overwhelming, overwhelmingly defeated by 67%, two-thirds of the vote. So I would request, and I appreciate the support this council showed on the first reading, I would respectfully request approval at the second reading of all three of our items, annexation, comprehensive plan and zoning. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? These items? Councilmember Urban.
Yeah.
Would I have a discussion or motion?
Just would like to thank Mr. Adams for helping explain that better. And I think the, the better solution overall is to work with the county and helping revise our JPA, which I think our staff is doing, working on at the moment. So just wanted to thank Mr. Adams for that. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion or questions? Councilmember Trace.
And this was, we discussed this before and you guys kind of made this comment in the first go around, but any drainage issues that might exist in the area, you guys are making sure to make them better or not make them worse?
Yes, yes, councilmember. We're required by ordinance, we're required by permit not to increase off-site drainage problems or create any, yes.
Yes. And then road connections, north, south, east, west, making sure that those meet our transportation element?
We are in compliance with your transportation element and the county's thoroughfare plan. Adopt the thoroughfare plan along with the Narcusi Community Overlay that has roadway network shown, yes. We're making local connections as well as, and I didn't mention, but we're also making connections with the pedestrian trails, the multipurpose trails that are required of that Narcusi Community Plan, along with the framework road, that extension of Zuni Road.
If it ever does make that connection?
Ultimately, it will make that connection if redevelopment and development occurs, yes. Not immediately.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-02. We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of item number three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have, excuse me. Feather in my throat. I think that was a motion for Councilmember Trace. Is that correct?
Uh, Askew.
Mr. Askew again. And we have a second from Councilmember Matheny.
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do we have a motion for the adoption of item 2022-04?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Councilmember Askew.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Trace and Clerk.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Brings us to item number seven. Madam Clerk, would you please read that into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-09, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing on the proposed property known as Roan Bridge and further described herein, and recognizing the Roan Bridge Community Development District created and chartered by Uniform General Law, the Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter 190, Florida Statute 2001, and hereafter acknowledging the Uniform District Charter expressed in Sections 100.06-100.041, Florida Statutes, and referenced and provided by Section 190.004, Section 4, Florida Statutes, and confirmed by Section 189.031, Section 3, Florida Statutes, establish the district on the property proposed in this petition and designating the initial members of the district boards of supervisors, and recognizing the designation, the powers of the district providing for separability and effective date.
City Manager Sturgeon?
Yes, Mayor. The applicant has requested that this be continued to a date certain of February 24th.
I make a motion that we continue this to February 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to council action, item number one.
Resolution number 2022-026R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a tri-party agreement between Center Lake Properties, LLP, Osceola County, and the City of St. Cloud for the construction and maintenance of certain roadways generally located east of Narcoussi Road, west of Nova Road, south of Joan Roads, and north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Hi, council members. Erin Sturk, Transportation Manager. The proposal before you is Resolution 2022-026R. This is for a project, several thousand acres in size, but for the roadways within it. A little bit of history on this project. On May 9th, in 2019, we entered into an annexation and development agreement for certain roadways within this project to be designed with additional capacity on two out of four of those segments. On October 12th, 2021, the mixed-use conceptual master plan and concept plan was approved by the City Council, and it was amended to include the framework streets, and that was known as the amended master plan. The Center Lake Ranch project is designing, permitting and constructing the following arterial roads. There's three of them, but they're broken into, Center Lake Ranch Boulevard is broken into two segments within this agreement, which has different conditions and terms. On December 29th last year, the City Council approved Resolution 2021-318R for the mobility fee credit agreement, which paid for the upgrades to framework street standards for two out of four of those framework street segments. There was Center Lake Ranch Boulevard Segment 1 and 12 Oaks Road. That was just for the upgrades with the costs, and that project is ready to develop now, and this agreement includes some maintenance terms for those two segments that you didn't see in December. This agreement has two roadways that are in the agreement that have costs associated with them. There's maintenance terms for all four segments, but with costs is the Center Lake Ranch Boulevard Segment 2, which is in green there, and the Bluebirds Grove Parkway from Center Lake Ranch Boulevard to Nova Road that they used to call it the Nova Road Connector. It also has some costs associated with it. The upgrades for framework street standards for those two segments on the last slide is outlined in this agreement, and it, the city has, the agreement currently reads that we are funding 100% of the upgrades to the county framework street standards for those two segments. The cost-sharing agreement also outlines a future cost-sharing agreement with the, with Osceola County that we will enter. When those two roadways go to build, the project only necessitates two-lane segments, and we've asked, we, us and the county, have asked that the roadways be built to four lanes from the get-go. There is a cost-sharing agreement that will come forward, and we will conduct a traffic study in coordination with Osceola County to determine the percentage of the trips of that additional capacity that are the cities in the county, and we'll, we'll develop a cost share based on that. This, like I said before, this agreement also determines the maintenance responsibilities for all four framework streets in the Center Lake Ranch property. It's a little bit different. The county's agreeing to maintain the first two segments that were funded in the December agreement, and this, this agreement reads that if those two segments that were cost-sharing on in this agreement come forward as two-lane streets, which is not anyone's goal, I don't think the developer, the city or the county's goal, that the county would agree to maintain those segments. That's a worst-case scenario. We don't want to do that. It incentivizes us to work with the county to get those four lanes constructed from the get-go, but there is a default. Because this project only requires two-lane facilities, if we don't get along and we can't come to terms, they have to be allowed to move forward, and there are certain conditions under which they would do that. Again, the costs, we've agreed to fund 100% of those framework street upgrades. We're going to do a cost share for the additional capacity, and the actual costs of improvements will be determined through formal review of the project costs at the time of construction. The two out of the four of the roads are not proposed to be built right away. They're in the next phases of the Center Lake Ranch project, but they have current estimates in there. Because we don't have that cost-sharing agreement with the county yet, we have estimated what would it be if the city had to fund 100% of those costs, and that's the $5.8 million number. Of course, we hope to bring that down by that cost-sharing agreement, but because we don't have those terms negotiated, we've, we've tried to estimate and ensure that we can cover those costs if we had to. It meets the strategic plan goals for growth management and for infrastructure, and staff recommend's approval of Resolution 2022-026R and the associated tri-party agreement, and we would request your approval. Thank you. I think the applicant's here.
Good evening, council. Celia Dorn with Nelson Mullins on behalf of Center Lake Properties. We agree with staff's recommendation for approval. This was approved by the Osceola County Board of County Commissioners on Monday, so they did approve it, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Trace?
I only have like 20 questions, so. Part of that Nova Connector commitment was making that connection from Narcoussi to Nova in 1999 units. Is that still in the plan?
Yes.
I know we're phasing this out. Or Bluebird, I guess is what it's called now. And then I'm fine, and I don't know if we need to modify this or whatever. I am, there's a, there's a gap at the end of Bluebird and the beginning of whatever the road we're calling it from all the development down Pine Tree, Pine Grove, whatever. It's late. I'm fine with like having funds, impact fee, creditable funds to figure out a way to make that connection, because now we can't, without eminent domain and everything, I don't think we can make that connection. So it's great to build a bridge, but if it's a foot short, it doesn't, it doesn't work.
Right.
Are we good with figuring out a way to make that happen?
I am.
You know, we don't need to modify the agreement because it's already been approved by the county, but like if we need to come back for something else to figure out how to put those funds in, I am perfectly fine with it.
Understood.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-26 Romeo.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace and a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do y'all want to give the next item another go around?
No, thank you.
Mr. Menzeris? Thank you guys for staying to the end.
Just a point of information. I just realized that I will not be present at the next council meeting. My partner, Lindsay Green, will be here. I have a, I got a birthday present that involves a concert, which happens to be that night.
Awesome.
Nice.
What, oh, you gotta tell me.
The Eagles concert. My son, my son got it from me.
Very nice.
I just realized, I just texted him and said, hey, what's the date of that concert?
I might not be here that night, too.
I'm sorry?
I might not be here that night, too.
I think we may need to counsel the council.
For the Eagles.
Thank you, Mr. Menzeris. Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I had a long conversation with the county manager today about the JPA negotiations, renegotiation. Very positive. On March 7th, myself, deputy city manager, and Melissa Dunkle will be meeting with Mrs. Knight to discuss the framework for that. So I'll be communicating that with you, and then I'm going to set up meetings with each of you to get more feedback on that. So just want to let you know that, and I know I'm recovering. Got cleared today, so I feel a lot better, but I will be out next week. My wife is having surgery, so I'll be out till Wednesday next week, available by phone, of course. So, thank you.
Glad you're doing better. Councilmember Trace?
Perfect, because I was gonna add on to Mr. Sturgeon's comment. Is it possible, and we might already be doing this, to have monthly, quarterly, transportation-type meetings between the county and the city? I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's overlapping now. Hopefully at some point, the PD and E study that we paid for kind of rolls out, and we can start funding strategies and whatever we got to do to make some of these roadway connections happen.
So, yes, we can do that. We have intergovernmental meetings. We can definitely add that part to those meetings or additional meetings. And again, I want to thank Erin also for her hard work on that agreement she just presented. She's been resolute. She was on a telephone call with three attorneys and five other people from the county and us, and she's been very patient and pushed that over the finish line. So, do you want to add anything to that, Erin, about those meetings? Thank you. Again, thank you for all your hard work.
I just want to let you know, we kicked off quarterly coordination meetings with the county, city-county transportation meetings. We have an agenda. We've gone over everything. It was a real full agenda, talking about everything we've got going on just to get started, and we've got a path forward. We're taking notes on to-dos, and we'll be following up with that. We've got staff assisting us with those minutes, and we really expect to make some progress. And some of the stuff with the JPA, we're bringing up in that meeting so that we can tackle it in that effort.
Perfect, because it seems like the county just has like $10 million falling from the sky in different avenues, so it's like, let's get some of those.
And we want to be able to tell you all what they're doing within city limits as well, so it's important.
Yeah, especially, I mean, Neptune hopefully is starting soon, and that's going to really affect things.
Yeah, so it was, it was a great experience. The last meeting went well, and we hope to continue that effort.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
I don't really have anything, but I, I got a contact today from Osceola Arts Program, where they were asking the, maybe, Mr. Askew might have got one, too, asking if the city could provide a sponsorship to their event, to provide scholarships for their kids, which I think is a great idea. I know Mr. Sturgeon was working diligently on it. I didn't know if you had an update.
I did not. I didn't hear back from Amy, but I'll talk to her about it first thing in the morning. I have talked to the real city manager.
So I guess, do we have, do we have consensus to provide them? So it's basically like $1,500 to get four tickets to go to their event, but it's money that's, they, they don't have any costs. Everything's been waived at Osceola Arts, but it's for like high school students pursuing arts. They, he said what it was, like dance, media, you know, it was like all the different types of art and stuff, and so I thought it'd be great if we could partner and, and help provide a scholarship.
I don't believe there are any objections to that.
Great. That's all.
Councilmember Urban?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Askew?
I really don't have anything, but I do think that this is a good council. We sometimes agree to disagree. We don't always agree together, but I think that we're very formal with each other, and, and I appreciate all of you being up here, so, thank you.
And I concur with that. Thank you so much.
He likes us.
I have a thank you card that I wanted to read. Thank you for thinking of us during our difficult time. The garden dish was absolutely beautiful, and that is a thank you from Sinda Smallwood and the Smallwood family and the, and the passing of Don. Also have a thank you from the Education Foundation for the $700 support of the clay chute, and they sent their thanks also. With that, I'll remind you of some dates coming up. This is not on your agenda, but February the 14th through the 18th is the Random Acts of Kindness Week, and we should all be nice to each other during this time. Thursday, February the 17th, there'll be a St. Cloud Economic Summit that will begin at 8:00 a.m. Thursday, February the 24th, there'll be a city council meeting at 6:30 here in council chambers. I'd like to also remind you that the St. Cloud Silver Spurs rodeo parade here in our own beautiful town will be Saturday, February the 19th, and my notes said 10, but I believe the parade doesn't actually start till 11. Is that correct? Or do you know, Mr. Sturgeon?
I do not know, Mayor.
All right. There will be a parade here.
I'll make sure you have that time.
Either 10 or 11. I think that's all. Do what? Warrant report? Yes. I was looking at another note I'd written down here. Okay. There'll be a Community Day of Love, February the 26th, honoring Black History Month. I was asked to announce that. That will be held at Hopkins Park from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. I couldn't read my handwriting. Warrant list, number five is available for your review. With that, there's nothing else on our agenda. We will be adjourned. We will be adjourned.